Okay, I have seven o'clock. So with that, I would like to call to order the Monday, October 4th, 2021, regular meeting of the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors. So first up, let's say the pledge together. Dave's projected it for us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Okay, before we go on to citizens input, there are two items that I'd like to move onto the floor that relate to small changes in the agenda this evening, and it shouldn't take but a minute. So the first item is I would like the board to consider moving the Special Report C, the COG Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, from the Special Report section to an area where we can have discussion and consider comments if we'd like to send any COG. This was a bit of an oversight on my part, because I hadn't put two and two together when I saw it was under Special Reports and that there might be a desire to forward some comments. So my motion is that we could move that from Special Report to an area in the agenda where we can have discussion and consider comments. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you. I see Steve seconding. Is there any discussion on the matter? About moving it? Okay. Thank you very much. With that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Thank you. And Dave, I was considering moving this just as kind of close as I possibly could to a place that made sense. And I was considering unfinished business first, in unfinished business, so that Pam Adams didn't have to wait too long to make her presentation. And also, because I think that this is kind of, it's not a township item, it's a COG item that we've been working on for some time. So I'm kind of thinking of it as unfinished business. But I wondered what your input is on that idea.
I think that's fine.
Okay, great. Then we'll move it to first, under unfinished business. Thank you. The second item is in the, I'm going to move that we move another agenda item, and that is under the consent agenda, under new business. Also, Item C, under C in that section. The board member request, the the single-use plastic bag ordinance. I'm going to request that we move that from the consent agenda to a place where we could have discussion and potentially action, which would only involve asking staff to perhaps prepare some information or a draft amendment kind of thing. And that is really done in order to facilitate that being discussed at a meeting where we're all present and in a timely manner. So could I get a second on that?
All second.
Thank you, Pam. I have motion and a second. Is there any concern or discussion, questions or thoughts? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Dave, I was also considering putting this under unfinished business, because the board had previously talked about it. I was considering putting this last under unfinished business. But your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think it's fine.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for moving through that. Now, let's please move on to citizens input. So anyone care to comment on anything tonight that is not found on our agenda? Okay, I am seeing none. Dave, do you see anyone?
I don't see any hands. If you'd like to, I would like to take a roll call on the Zoom of the board. Oh, forget to that, okay.
Oh, no, sure. That's great. Please do. Go right ahead. Please.
Sure. Thank you. I just wanted to, since this is a Zoom meeting, as I typically do, ensure that all board members can hear and interact in Zoom. So I'll take a roll call. But before I do, just a couple rules of the road etiquette reminders. Essentially, this is, as you know, entirely a virtual meeting held with the Zoom telemeeting platform. It's been advertised as such, as required by the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act. So if you're joining tonight as a member of the public, if you, and even as an agent to speak on behalf of an agenda item, if you can use the chat feature at the bottom of your screen to enter your name, municipality of residence, and if applicable, the topic that you'd like to speak on, that'll allow our recording secretary to capture the minutes appropriately. And if you are not speaking, I just request that you stay on mute so that we can drown out any background noise. And board members that are making motions are seconding them. If you could, please just give your name so that we can ensure the minutes are correct and accurate. And then that's all I have to say. I'll take a roll of the, a roll call of the board. So please indicate you're here when your name is called. Mr. Nini?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Steckler?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Yeah.
Ms. Strickland?
Here.
Okay, we have a call. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. And that also reminded me that I also have an announcement. I wanted to announce that the board did have an executive session on September 21st, 2021, on a matter of personnel. Thank you. Okay, let's move to the approval of the minutes. I'd love to entertain a motion to approve the September 20th, 2021 Board of Supervisors' regular meeting minutes.
This is Patty. So moved.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
This is Lisa. I'll second.
Great. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. Thank you. And motion passes unanimously. Next up on the agenda tonight is a proclamation. This is a proclamation of the Township of Ferguson, Center County, Pennsylvania, recognizing and honoring the service of the Ferguson Township Garden Club in beautifying the community and welcoming travelers with the garden at the intersection of Route 45 and Route 26. I'll introduce this this evening. The Ferguson Township Garden Club has maintained the median garden at the intersection of Shingle Town Road and West College Avenue since 2007. And the club was originally established in 1964. The township provides assistance with material and equipment to prepare the site each year, and the Garden Club does the rest. As the intersection is scheduled to be realigned and signalized in 2022, this will be the last year that the garden exists in its current location. The Pennsylvania Department of Transportation has accommodated space on the side of the road for a future garden. But to commemorate today and recognize the garden and efforts of the Ferguson Township Garden Club, the board is asked to consider the proclamation provided with the agenda. Additionally, a framed photo of the garden this year will be permanently displayed in the lobby of the Township Building. Members of the Garden Club, including Rosalie Brooks, Fran Newer, and Thelma Holman, a founding member of the club over 50 years ago, will be in attendance, are in attendance to recognize, to accept this recognition. So as I said, we have a proclamation in our agenda, and I would be honored to read that proclamation and then go to the board for comments and certainly turn the floor over to anybody from the Garden Club. We would be honored if you wanted to say a few words this evening. So with that, let me read our proclamation. "A proclamation of the Township of Ferguson, Center County, Pennsylvania, recognizing and honoring the service of the Ferguson Township Garden Club for beautifying the median at the intersection of PA Route 45 and PA Route 26. Whereas in 1964, the Ferguson Township Garden Club was founded to promote an increased sense of community through gardening. And whereas, members of the Ferguson Township Garden Club have maintained the median garden at the intersection of Shingle Town Road and West College Avenue since 2007. And whereas, the beautiful floral design planted in the median by the Garden Club brings together a blend of nature and art that is undoubtedly cultivated with a love for gardening. And whereas, the intersection of PA Route 45 and PA Route 26 will be realigned and signalized in 2022, which will no longer accommodate the garden in its current location. And whereas, a framed photo of the Garden Club's final year maintaining the garden in the median will be forever enshrined in the lobby of the Ferguson Township Municipal Building. Now, therefore, the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize and honor the service of the Ferguson Township Garden Club in beautifying the community and welcoming travelers with the garden at the intersection of PA Route 45 and PA Route 26, and urges all citizens to support the township's beautification projects within the community proclaimed this fourth day of October, 2021." And thank you to Centrice Martin for penning that beautiful proclamation. Thank you very much, Senator Martin. With that, I'd like to open it up to board members. If anyone would care to say a comment or two. It was a fantastic proclamation. It's certainly not necessary, but should you desire. Anyone care to comment? Steve?
I'd just like to say, after many years of driving past there, I want to say thanks to the Garden Club for all the efforts and for a really great entry, or actually not even an entry, and area within the township passing from one part to another. So, thanks a lot.
Thank you so much, Steve. Anyone else? Pam?
I agree. I think it's a very special space. And I don't know if they know how much we all appreciate it. So now, now is your chance to understand how much we love it. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. And Lisa, I saw your hand had been up.
Yeah, I was gonna just kind of echo what Pam just said. I hope you know how much it's appreciated, and we all often see you all out there working. And so it hasn't gone unnoticed, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Lisa. I'll also add, Steve talked about it kind of being an entryway, and it actually is a place where I think of frequently, I commute to Harrisburg a lot. And when I hit that intersection and see those beautiful flowers, I frequently think I'm home. So I can really relate to that. Thank you so much. And I wanted to open the floor up to any Garden Club members that would like to say a few words. You're more than welcome to. And you certainly don't need to feel pressured to either. But if you'd like to, you can just wave your hand and...
Thank you.
Oh, certainly. Thank you very, very much. Beautiful. Thank you. All right. Thank you all. We... Oh, yes. Somebody else wanted to say something. Thank you.
I just think I wanted people to know that I wanted people to know that Thelma Holman started the Garden Club over 50 years ago. And I think it's a real accomplishment to keep a club going for that many years. And she's still participating.
So true. Thank you so much. Thank you. And we do have a motion in our agenda this evening. If a board member would like to make that for us.
This is Lisa. I'll move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the proclamation recognizing and honoring the service of the Ferguson Township Garden Club and beautifying the community and welcoming travelers with the garden at the intersection of Route 45 and Route 26.
This is Patty. I'll second.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on the motion? Thank you again. Pam, yes?
I just have a question. Is it going to be another spot for it, for something pretty like that?
There will be a spot and accommodation by PennDOT at that same area, but not there in the center, as I understand it, off to the side of the intersection. And I don't think anybody quite knows 100% yet what that will look like until final design and really even maybe building of it. But staff could probably perhaps enhance my answer some. Dave?
Well, I haven't looked at it. Maybe Dave Modricar can tell you approximately where that new location will be.
What I can do is, is get whoever is interested, a draft of the design drawing, and then we can show you the size of the spaces, and you can start planning perhaps.
Oh, fantastic.
Nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Pam. Anything else? Okay, with that, we have a motion and a second. Dave, if you would do a roll call vote for us, please.
Or can? Mr. Nini?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Steckler?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Motion does pass unanimously. And we'll have that. I look forward to seeing that photo up in the lobby of the Ferguson Township Building when I get there next. Thank you all very much for attending and for all the work that you've done and the beauty that you've added to the community for so, so many years. Thank you very much. Okay, next up, we have special reports. First one of the evening is Policing and Communities of Color Task Force Report. Dr. Emile Cunningham, the Task Force Chair, is joining us here this evening. Welcome.
Hello, everybody. How's everybody doing? I appreciate you having me here to share this report with you all. So here's the thing. I got some behind-the-scenes information that said, listen, Dr. Cunningham, you're more than welcome to do the whole thing again, but but folks have seen it, and some folks have seen it several times. And so I don't want to take up too much of your meaning. I do want to highlight a few things that, that we typically touch on. I'll probably spend more time on the sort of recommendations. If you are, and I likely won't go into as much detail, but I'm more than happy to have this be a conversation regarding any questions or insights or any things that you might want to know. I can tell you about some next steps that have recently come to fruition as of last week. And then we can go from there, if that's okay with folks. And David, I'm not gonna lie, you're sitting on my screen, obviously. So I'm watching your head nod, which means that I will go ahead with that plan then, if it's all right with everybody. Let me go ahead here and get my presentation up, and then I'll share my screen. And a fun field question, as always. Can anybody see my screen? Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. All right. As was said, my name is Dr. Mel Cunningham. I had the pleasure of serving as the Chair for the Task Force on Policing and Communities of Color with several colleagues who were on this call. You've heard me say it again, but I'll always give credit where credit is due. Thank you to Centrice. Thank you to Shereen and others who were involved. Chief Albright, who involved in this sort of seminal and critical work. I'm not going to go through the whole introduction, but we had a charge. It was threefold. Look at bias and use of force data, examine progress that was made previously, and then offer actionable recommendations. We did that through trying to build bridges, looking at legislative insight, and then always seeking out continual feedback and like taking that information in that folks might have shared. And we did that also through three subgroups, primarily thinking about what happened since the last time. What does the current data show? And then how do we benchmark and research to then ensure that we have the capability of understanding what was actually going on and what should be going on sort of within our environments? And how do we position this the appropriate way? So that way, information doesn't make us feel good, but ultimately is verified through the research. And then our recommendations were fivefold, as far as external consultants, diversified workforce, data consistency, training, and community. Now, findings previously that were shared, we're really focused on UPS and State College Police Department. And one of the big things that we were reminded of was, hey, this really wasn't including all of our different townships, right? Really didn't include Ferguson, didn't include, and didn't include Spring or Belfont. And so some of that were some of our limitations. Just like I heard you share moments ago about the proclamation, we realized that lots of proclamations were being offered through the different townships. And so that's wonderful that things were happening as far as promoting greater recognition and celebration of successes around the community. We talked about the concept of increasing recruitment of extension efforts and what that means and how that was done sort of positively in other areas and how we were challenged related to some constraints that were happening with legislation. Ongoing education, saying that was happening, and that's good. But at the same time, often only for those who are within and sort of looking out for those opportunities. And then outreach to improve and build stakeholder engagement, saying that happened, but trying to find ways to make that more transparent. And then lastly, trying to identify and define some specific metrics to ensure there are consistencies. That's about as fast as I can go through that section for folks, if you will. Then I'm gonna pause here, because I get a chance to talk fast. Somebody said hurry up, so I'll hurry up. But I want to make sure if anybody has any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out. Just raise your hand feature, and I'll be able to see you and let me know. This slide here, I am going to take a break and slow down on, because people have heard me say it before. For folks who are new on the call, who have not seen this, or probably didn't see this pulled out within the reports in of itself, this is some of the information that we found out from our sort of investigation of the bias and use of force data. And at its core, as you've heard me say before, right? We did nothing more than look straight at the statistics, saying, what does it look like on a three to five-year either arrest or a use of force? What is your overall demographics? What's your population? And then how represented are they within the use of force or the arrest rates? It makes sense if you have 3% sort of Black African-Americans, they represent 75% use of force. Chances are, something's askew there, right? Don't know what's happening, but something is askew. So, straight from a statistics point, is what we did this at, looking at Belfont, 4.4% Black African-American population, but represented 9% overall arrest rate. Ferguson, nearly 5% Black African-American population, but 15% arrest rate and about 12% overall use of force. Patent, 5% Black African-American, 80% arrest rate, and 26% overall use of force. Spring, less than half a percent, but at the same time represented 7.5, nearly 8% arrest rate. State College, about 5% Black African-American population, but 60% overall use of force. And as I've said before, arrest data was not available at the time, but is available now. But I'm trying to keep these consistent, and so not mentioning that here. But we'll be looking to add that information in as we continue to move forward. And then for University Police and Public Safety, really looking at a 4% student population, 2.6% employee population specifically for Black African-Americans, but an 11% overall arrest rate and 50% overall use of force. However, that is contextual, because it's for all kind of campuses. We were not able to receive that information disaggregated for specifically University Park, hoping to be able to get access to that. I mentioned the last asterisk here about the Asian populations experiencing greater percentage use of force, because I want folks to know that more than anything, we actually did look at sort of the experiences for racial and ethnic differences across all categories of which the local policing agencies collected information on. But the one that always consistently came up, which is why I always pause, is the sort of misalignment between the population within Black African-American and either arrest rate or use of force data. But as I say, when we start getting to the recommendations, we don't know why that is. And so always jump down to the final one, which says the racial/ethnic disparity analysis, right? Yes, that given the data findings, we're going to say that we need to figure out what's going on with it. Is it incidental? Is it intentional? Is there something more that we need in order to understand those data pieces? We don't know. And so one of the recommendations that came out from the overall task force was that how do we identify an external consultant that can come in and provide us with, one, the lens that we need, and also to understand how we contextualize everything, so that way we can move this forward. Because we don't want to walk around saying all of our local policing agencies are rampant with racists and everything happening towards Black African-American populations. That is likely not true, but we do need to understand why the disparities exist. And that is sort of what our major recommendation is from this point. The other ones, looking at perceptions of community relations, saying that, hey, we need to figure out why do things look differently for domestic minoritized populations and non-US citizens than it does for majority. Typically, as you've heard me share before, we get information from a lot of our climate assessments or our culture surveys that only really highlight the experiences of those within the majority population. And ergo, do not highlight then the experiences of those who oftentimes are underrepresented within those surveys. Looking to better understand and work relationships of our local policing agencies as well as case processing, so that way then we can have transparent understanding of what's happening, once again, for the processing of racial, ethnic, or gender differences. But at the same time, so that way folks understand why there's such an influx during the past four weekends of football going on in this area, right? Which, if you know, you know. But if you don't, you wonder why all of a sudden, my daughter said to me on the drive one Saturday, Daddy, why are there so many orange cones out on Atherton? I do not understand why all these cops are looking at us. I was like, whoa, they're directing traffic and helping us out. But yes, I can understand what that might look like for somebody who's brand spanking new to the area. Diversified workforce came up before, came up again. But our recommendations here are shifting things to think a little bit differently. Cluster hiring to say, how do we engage in a more unified approach? We realize that the CBAs right now are set on very different schedules as well as the repeat on different schedules, whether it be a two, three, or four year. But then the consideration is, how do we align them? So that way, we can identify ways to bring in clusters of individuals, specifically clusters of diversified police officers, who can then support one another. Not say that they need to report up through one individual agency, but having somebody then who reports up through Ferguson, reports up through Patent, reports up through State College, but at least having that community, that network that allows them to develop a relationship with everybody else, being able to move forward. Another recommendation was a DEI Director and Equity Officer, somebody to help guide the efforts of our local policing agencies specifically around DEI matters. Recognizing that's going to be a big lift, but more than anything, at least providing us the opportunity to say that, hey, here is the individual, the person similar to a Dr. Samia Chatter, similar to an Iris Richardson and University Police and Public Safety, who then is solely responsible for the DEI imperative. Because what that then allows you to do is allows folks to get to doing their day-in-and-day-out jobs. That is their day-in-and-day-out job. It provides a support then for minoritized communities to reach out to that individual, as well as internal support then for police officers who might need assistance. And then lastly, a mentorship program developed in Monodolphine, a Pennsylvania State Police Program, to look at ways to improve hiring efforts. And what they found was that folks were looking to that mentorship program as a career advancement, a career opportunity, because it said that somebody was invested in you from the moment in which you got there, moving forward. Data consistency, a lot of folks, question is, but more than anything, it's just about saying, how do we engage in consistent data collection processes? The reality is, is that each of the local policing agencies collect information very differently, as was evidenced on our use of force and on some times our racial/ethnic categorization. So we want to create a standard that allows us to say, how do we look out at the overall perspective of Center County, of those folks who are engaged in these efforts? So that way, we understand what's happening. We also put inside the report to begin collecting traffic stop data, because more than anything, we wanted to make sure that it was part of the next process. We know that it's part of the next process, because Pennsylvania State Police is being required to do it, ergo, the local policing agencies are doing it. But we didn't want to miss out on not having that within the report. And then also, we say we want to leverage the university and say, you absolutely, university, Penn State, need to take part in this. You need to put some sort of money behind it as well, to help support these efforts in a way that's then going to allow for more transparent management of the data, right? Because if you have an entire office, old pair, that is used to managing a large data system, that's used to taking pieces of information from different organizations, putting it in a format that allows everybody else to... Taking pieces of information from different organizations, putting it in a format that allows everybody else to read and understand. Then why not offer that as a sort of a public good, if you will? Training, something that's uh been talked about a whole lot within the past, I want to say. Year and a half across across the country, but developing a specialized trading sector that allows folks to. Um, particularly focus on these individual matters, mental health, substance abuse. Um, calls involving juveniles, noise complaints, crisis negotiations, domestic assault and violence. And not to say that this doesn't already happen in some areas within the community. But definitely a recommendation that there be specified sectors within all of our local policing agencies because that doesn't exist right now. Also then looking at the crisis intervention team and saying, hey, how do we refine, reevaluate it? The reality is, is that during the course of this process of the task force. We found out that the crisis intervention team exists and we were shared that this thing exists and that was wonderful. But the reality is that there were a lot of folks who had never heard of it. Who didn't know it existed, didn't know what the purpose of it was. And so for us, then it's a recommendation to refine and reevaluate it. So that way it can be better understood and represented and seen within a community. And then lastly. Continuous training, just saying that we all need to continually learn, engage in the journey, if you will. And that's no different than our local police engaging agencies and our officers. We're going to be in person via new technology, local experts with particular emphasis on Penn State faculty. And staff who are engaged in these efforts. We have some really good folks who are trying to do some great things and we're hoping that they can help support us. And then lastly, the rest of the recommendations around community engagement. Which more than anything is just saying, how do we provide opportunities for our local police officers to actually be engaged within the community? So that way folks see them in all different spaces. And it's not just something that you just happen to show because you're an individual citizen, but what does that look like as if it's part of your job? Right? Which is why we say, listen, allow them to choose it, make it part of the service hours and actually fully compensate them for the time. Don't expect them to just show up. Because, hey, this is a public good and we expect you to do that. But no, this is part of their responsibility as well as being one member of the community and to then engage in the community. Now, as I've said before, what I obviously want and encourage and hope that folks would choose. Things that are related to the experiences of black indigenous and people of color, absolutely. But at the same time, still providing officers the opportunity to choose what makes sense for them. Now, the next steps as I am flying through this for folks who have heard it before. Um, I want to share the report with local community to generate discussion of my feedback. Been telling folks that if you have concerns, you have questions, you have insights, please, please, please share that with us. The um uh action together website that the university posted the report on. Is still able to collect information and feedback and I check on a weekly basis to see if there's anything new going on. Nexus responded community calls for transparency by engaging in these presentations. Doesn't matter where, doesn't matter when, I am happy to engage in that and share the exact same information on a continual basis. Once again, continue and expand a task force to work and support local policing agencies as of last week. Um, that email was sent out from the executive sponsors, um Sarah Thorndike uh and Tom Fontaine to say, hey. We're transitioning this to an advisory committee on policing communities of color. With the charge of uh working to move forward with some of these recommendations in partnership then. With our uh local municipalities and our local policing agencies. So that way we not, we don't wait another five years in order to actually get this up and running again. It has been pared down a bit. It has been gone over the list quite extensively to make sure that those who should be involved can be involved. And I can tell you that Dr. Samia Chatters, who will be serving as a co-chair along with me. Are excited to help lead this effort and begin moving us forward. I've been watching podcasts, I've been reading articles, I've been. Checking out all kinds of information that might help us move on to that next step. And then lastly, for us, ability to continue that dialogue, as I mentioned. Earlier, we did have some um sort of connections and one of those was was with the Pennsylvania Black Caucus. Uh Pennsylvania Legislative Black Caucus on Police Reform, hoping to continue engaging with them so that way we can make sure we are moving. Uh, in lockstep with some of the initiatives that they had. Okay, here we go. This small slide, as you've heard me say before, shows a little bit bigger on your screen, which is fine. But at the same time, I want folks to know all the individuals who were part of this process from beginning to end. Some folks had to drop off midway through, but everybody I wanted to make sure they have recognition for the help and support they did. And putting all this work together, the report in of itself was more than three hundred pages, right? It was absurdly long. The reality is, is that the narrative in itself was more than thirty pages and that's not bad. But we wanted to make sure that people had transparent access to the only information that we use in order to come up with. The recommendations that we had, which is why we wanted to make sure everything was in there. And so whenever you see folks on here, please thank them for the incredible work they did. And then here we go with questions, comments and thoughts.
Thank you, Dr. Cunningham, so much. Um, take a deep breath and have a sip of water. I know after I'm talking that fast for that long, I need one. Um, uh. While you do that, uh, any comments, questions from the board? Lisa.
Um, I'll, I'll just have one question, but I wanted to thank you for coming tonight and sharing this with us. And thank you for your presentation at General Forum last week. It was really interesting, obviously a lot of important information. Uh, and a lot of information uh for us to look at in the future. And um, so I appreciate everybody's. Work uh on that task force. So thank you again. I wanted to ask um Chief Albright, since he's here and Centris Martin about um their participation. I saw them on the list there. So I was just. Curious um if you wanted to share any uh a- any um insight into what you contributed maybe. Um, you know, how you were involved in in that for Ferguson Township.
I mean, for for me, one of the things that, you know, sharing the information that, you know, I said, you know. Trying to collect like traffic stop data, it was was an interesting topic because. I've seen other agencies that that collected that and they and they implement other processes that make it. More work for an officer that stops a car. And usually the result of that is then less, fewer cars are stopped. That's not really what we're looking for. So it's. Trying to find a way or a system that can be implemented that that doesn't have that same resolve. That collects that data that that we're looking for. I mean, that's one of the things then. Starting in May, uh, we put a process in place and then um. In June, that is now part of the uh board report that that information is part of that report. Um, that not only now we can look at it on a regular basis, but then we can look at it and use it part of this discussion later on in the future. And that's even with the, you know, use of force and arrest information. It was, it was stuff that we, you know, always reported to the state, but. You know, there really wasn't an evident and easy way to go back and look at that data, but now. Once again, that's something that's been part of the board report that I've been enhancing along the line to create that. Transparency in someplace where somebody can go and find information that they may be looking for.
Thanks, Chief. Um, right. So I was actually invited by the State College Borough to serve as a community representative. So as a. You know, I work for Ferguson Township. I am also a uh State College Borough resident. So my invitation to participate actually came from the Borough. Um, to serve as a community Borough resident uh representative. You know, and I'd like to think that my um, you know. My involvement with the lens of, you know, a resident living in the community was valuable. And I think that. Also, my contribution with that municipal management lens was. I'd like to think helpful and in being able to talk a little bit more about legislation and. And some of the other things that have to be considered when we're talking about changes that. There's a local process to follow and there's also legislation at the state. Level um that we we really, you know, should consider reviewing um for any sustainable strategic. Approach for um some of these proposed recommendations. So that was my. My involvement.
Thank you both so much for um for being involved with that and for sharing your uh, you know, involvement here tonight. I was interested in that, having heard the presentation last week. Um, so that's great. That's really interesting, Chief Albright about. The traffic stops and the data collection and how those um. Yeah, collecting that data really impacts uh the work that I hadn't really thought about it that way. So that's interesting, but. You know, the the data is um, you know, like I said, significant and I I. Am supportive of looking into that to get a clearer picture like Dr. Cunningham said of exactly. Uh, you know, what's behind those numbers. So again, I appreciate uh all the work that's gone into this.
Thanks, Lisa. Thanks, Chief and Centuries. Others?
Well, I guess I I I guess I'll add a a a brief comment. Um. I guess moving forward, um, I think it's important to be really transparent in the expectations that. Are being put forward to the municipalities. Um. I I'll speak for myself here, but in the presence of the board. Um, I don't typically receive well. The a Penn State top down kind of directive of what we need to do. And so. The the history of how this has happened is like kind of a little bit. Related to Penn State and the Borough and then kind of we us being add-ons and so. In the future, moving forward. Let's um, you know, be asked to actually appoint folks to bodies that. Um, will be expected to have staff resources put toward. I guess. That that's what I would hope because I like to focus on the content instead of the process, because if the process isn't proper, it's hard to focus on the content for me. Um, that's my maybe issue. Um, but I think that it's going to be important moving forward if we hope to do so altogether. It's my thoughts, but I also want to echo my appreciation for the work that has been done. Um, echo some of the other board members in that. So, thank you so much.
Thanks, Laura, and I appreciate your comment. I think, you know, obviously there are always opportunities to learn lessons on how we do things better and how we do things differently. And so I hope. That as we transition to the advisory committee, um, that that process has been followed. I. I'm obviously out of it and and really acts a survey as one of the co-chairs, but. I'm hopeful that as we move forward with identifying ways to um put these recommendations into action. That for me, it's all about how do we work together with our local municipalities and local agencies rather than sort of saying, here's what you need to do. Right? Obviously here, recommendations that we think might help, but these recommendations should clearly come. Um, in in sort of concert in and in collaboration with folks who we're engaged with.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that feedback. All right, if there's nothing else, I think we can move on to our next special report of the evening. Thank you. Uh, and that is the Ferguson Township Greenhouse Gas Emissions Reduction Strategy Report by Ms. Brandy Robinson. Our Climate Action Committee, I believe Chair, are you not, Brandy?
All right, let's uh queue up my presentation and see if. See if the screen sharing works, everyone.
Randy?
All right. Can you see my screen? Yeah? Hold on. I lost my pictures of you. So if you're giving me a thumbs up, I can't see it.
Sorry, yes, you can't see your screen. Yeah.
Okay, you know, I think with the multiple monitors, very strange things happen. And and screens disappear, but the good news is you can see what you need to. Okay. All right. Well, thank you all um for letting me come and speak with you a little bit this evening. I'm Brandy Robinson. I chair our ad hoc Climate Action Committee. And I'm hoping to chat with you tonight about our upcoming work. To produce a Ferguson Township specific greenhouse gas reduction strategy. All right. So recognizing that not everyone was here when this journey began a couple of years ago. I wanted to start with just a very brief overview of how things got started. And I thought that a good framing for our discussion tonight would be to to think about the three key areas of the twenty seventeen resolution. That led to the development of our Climate Action Committee and the work that we're continuing to do. So the the big splashy takeaway from our resolution was that it commits us to getting to net zero greenhouse gas emissions by the year twenty fifty. But in addition to that, it also calls for us to lead by example as we find our way to that, to that magical zero number. And to be engaging with our peer governments and other entities in sort of. A pursuit of this broader climate action and awareness within our community. And so my plan for our conversation tonight is to sort of work through these. And share with you our committee's remaining plans to fulfill our charge and our recommendations then for your next steps. Okay, so. I will start by saying I acknowledge that, you know, getting to net zero by twenty fifty feels like a lofty goal. But it's a necessary one. But before we can really think about it, we have to, we have to think about, well, what does it mean? And before we can ever try to to start achieving that goal, we need to know where we're starting from. So the first thing our committee did. Which some of you are aware of, was to inventory our township's collective greenhouse gas emissions. So we did this in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty using the most recently available data we had at the time, which was from calendar year twenty sixteen. So um the emissions values that you see here on this slide were all derived using um. A uh uh an inventorying tool from called Clear Path, which is um. One of the leading industry inventory calculators that also happens to be what Cog and the Borough use to track their emissions. So it's really good in terms of giving us apples to apples comparisons because we're using the same, the same inputs to uh to evaluate our emissions data. So our findings were pretty typical for a community of our size, you know, residential and commercial energy consumption. And transportation, they're really the biggest share of our emissions and therefore something we should be thinking about as the biggest opportunity for reductions. This is really good news because. In these sectors in particular, reducing the and reducing those emissions translates to saving money. Um, and avoided utility expenditure. So. It's not a financial burden to make progress toward our goal and can instead kind of serve as a unifying platform for us for the broader reduction effort longer term. We're saving money, we're reducing emissions, the atmosphere is happy and those of us paying utility bills are happy too. Um, in that twenty seventeen resolution, however, we only set the target for twenty fifty. And I think in order to keep us on track, we need an interim target as well. So our committee. Has uh recommended adopting a forty-five percent reduction relative to that twenty sixteen baseline for the year twenty thirty. So this aligns with the center region's interim target, which Pam will probably talk about later. And is also, it it's a science-based target which tells us, you know. The science tells us this is where we need to be to be on track to avert. Catastrophic impacts that occur when we sort of tip the scales at warming, hitting above one and a half to two degrees Celsius over pre-industrial levels. So I think that by establishing this target, which aligns with the broader regional effort coming into play. That will help us ensure that we have sort of continuity of messaging in our community. So for Ferguson Township, that forty-five uh percent reduction by twenty thirty represents just over. A hundred thousand metric tons. And if anyone's interested in digging more into any of these numbers, I'm happy to chat about that offline. One of the other things the resolution calls for us to do is to to lead by example. And you know, that target feels daunting, twenty thirty doesn't feel so far away anymore. But let's just take a minute quickly to recognize that. You know, we're already doing a lot in this space to lead by example in the township. And I think that this is really key to to the success of any long-term strategy that our committee can recommend for you. So before we go asking our residents and our business owners to help us pull that emissions curve down. We should, we should continue to put our own municipal operations house in order and get those emissions in check now. The good news here is that you all are already doing a lot and you already have a lot of good stories to tell. And lessons learned that we can share um with our with our colleagues in in the region. We can demonstrate um success in terms of cost savings and other environmental benefits realized from projects we've already implemented. Now, that's not to say that there isn't more that we can do because certainly obviously there is, but um. I think that part of what we will see as we as we work through this reduction strategy process, both developing the strategy and then implementing it. Is that we're going to find gaps in our effort, places where we definitely need to be doing a better job and maybe places where. We might be standing in our own way, you know. It's possible that we will discover that we have an ordinance here or there that actually makes it more difficult to achieve our climate goals. So we're going to find things, these things out along the way and we're going to need to be able to learn from that and adapt as we go in service to this resolution. One thing um that I think would be particularly helpful in the near term and I'm. that I think would be particularly helpful in the near term, and I'm hoping that maybe someone here tonight will want to help me with this is that, you know, I feel like the, the board and maybe some other folks who are, are involved in Ferguson Township perhaps have a much better understanding of the, the myriad initiatives around our township that sort of fit into this broader puzzle of climate action and sustainability initiatives. But many of us as residents don't really have a, a full understanding of what's going on from the 30,000 foot view. So I think it would be really helpful for us to be promoting these efforts collectively. Maybe we can have sort of a climate action umbrella on our township website where we promote these things and connect them back to, to climate change. You know, I always tell people that the good news and the bad news about climate change is that it pretty much touches everything we care about. And so I think it's important for us to be, to be building these connections so that people, people see it's, it's not about sad polar bears drifting on melting icebergs. It's about flooding in our community or drought or heat waves or things like that. So if we can start to tie these connections together, I think that will be valuable. So I would love to see us pull together some stories of some, some recent work that's been done in the township, the public works building, the green infrastructure policy, street light replacement, stormwater management, all of these things, like let's pull these together and tell a story of, of broad climate action in our community. The other thing that the resolution asks us to do is to be engaging peer governments and other institutions. You know, the big question has always been, well, how will we really reduce these emissions? How do we actually do this on the ground? And you know, when our committee began this work in 2018, we were pretty much on our own in the region. But shortly after our committee was established, the Center Region Planning Agency created that sustainability planner position that, that Pam so, so beautifully occupies and rocks. And you know, as you're going to hear soon enough, with the input of a variety of community subject matter experts and a technical advisory group, they have put together this extensive reduction strategy for the entire region. And this will really serve as a guiding document for our committee as we work to tailor something specific to Ferguson Township. And so I wanted to just note here that how Ferguson fits into the region in terms of its emissions profile. So as you can see, we're just a little bit over a quarter of the region's emissions. And that's, that's pretty predictable. And what you might also notice is that those biggest, those biggest sectors and therefore our biggest opportunities for, for reduction are similar from the Ferguson profile as it is for the center region profile. So I think, you know, our next step, what our committee is really going to be focusing on for, for the next six months is, is leveraging this cap kind of is, I like to think of it as a menu of options. No, there, there are more than, there are more than 80 options for reducing emissions and adapting to climate change that are detailed in this report. And so our job, I think, as the climate action committee will be to sort of pick and choose the things that we think Ferguson Township should prioritize over the next three to five years with an emphasis on tackling those biggest pieces of our emissions pie, energy and transport. And then we're also going to be focusing particularly near term on, on things we can do to incentivize efficiency gains and provide education and outreach and other incentives as we work to build broad community support for the longer haul. So, um, I, I think that, you know, that having the center region climate action and adaptation plan to pull from will really help us sort of focus our efforts and tie them to what's happening at the, happening at the regional level. So, so far I've only talked to you about emissions and our efforts to reduce them. And that, that is important and that is the primary focus of what you've asked us to do as a committee. But I really think it's important to talk about the role of adaptation and resiliency planning because it's a necessary part of any climate strategy we have moving forward. To be very frank with you, I could have a magic wand and turn off all of Ferguson Township's emissions today and bring us to net zero. And, and we would still, we would still experience the impacts of climate change for quite some time. The same would be true, even if that wand worked for the entire world. I mean, in March of 2020 and April of 2020, when the world kind of stopped spinning, nobody traveled anywhere, everyone was stuck at home. You know, COVID, COVID showed us that even with that huge of a change in, in our behaviors, emissions dipped by about nine percent. And while that was a big dip, it was nine percent, not 90. So there's a lot of work to be done. And so we can't mitigate our way out of this problem. We must also be prepared to adapt to the changes that we're already experiencing and that will get more severe as we go. I mean, the, the thing about climate impacts is that they're highly localized. They're happening at the local level. They're costing us money and, and lost time and, and sometimes they're dangerous to people's health and wellbeing right here in our community. So anything we can do to be improving our, our resiliency and adaptive capacity for these events will be, will be time well spent. So, next steps, here's what you can expect from our committee for the next six months. The first thing that I think we need to do is to formally adopt that interim target. I say formally, maybe that's not the way I, I see it. I don't know if that's an amendment to the resolution. If you just want us to put it into the strategy, I'm not sure procedurally what the best bet is, but I think that we should start working on that. On the understanding that we're seeking that 45% reduction by 2030. And then now that the, the regional cap sort of menu of options for us is complete, we're going to start tailoring our Ferguson plan and we will deliver that to you by April. And then finally, I think that when we, you know, when we deliver this reduction strategy to you in April, our committee's charge will be fulfilled and the work will only be just starting. And so our committee has talked about this a lot and currently we, we think that our recommendation is for a standing committee to be convened to oversee the implementation and monitoring of our recommendations. And this is sort of our current thinking about what that standing committee would need to do. On the mitigation side of the house, they would need to implement that three to five year plan that we're going to give you by April. And then they'll need to track emissions in the interim to see if the plan is working. And then I think that, you know, they will need to then come up with an additional three to five year reduction strategy beyond that. And then on the adaptation and resiliency side of the house, I think that a good next step would be to build upon the community resilience building workshop that was convened in the spring that Dave sent trees and a couple others on, on here tonight and I participated in. You know, I've suggested a standing committee here and I vaguely understand that there are advantages and disadvantages to pursuing that versus another ad hoc group or something else. But currently our committee believes that because of the, the sort of long-term nature of this project, it's sort of a, that a standing committee might be the most appropriate path. So with that, I'm happy to, to take any questions. We're, we're looking forward to, to working on this and having some, some concrete solutions in your hands soon.
Thank you, Brandy. Um, if you, uh, if you wanted to just stop screen sharing and then we can get everybody's faces back up on to, thank you very much.
I can see your faces again too.
Yeah, it's, I know multitasking craziness with the, um, screens and buttons and everything. Uh, and, and now my cat is trying to join us all, so I'm blocking over here. So thank you so much. Thank you so much for the presentation. I'm going to turn it over to the board for any questions or comments. Pam Steckler.
Yes, I'm glad that, hi Brandy. Thank you for work. And I am glad that you mentioned, uh, changing it from ad hoc to a standing committee. I was surprised to see it was ad hoc and I actually questioned it myself. So especially going forward, if we're really serious about tackling this and we better be, I think it would be good for you guys to be in on, you know, a real long-term commitment. Thank you.
Thanks Pam. Patty, 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 you had your hand up.
Yep. Um, I just basically was going to echo what Pam was saying is that thank you for your work. It was, that was great. And, um, I would also be supportive of it being a standing committee. Because it is something that's going to go on into the future. And I think, as, as I hear it and follow climate change, you know, um, more and more careers and, and things like that are going to be in the industry of climate change, et cetera. And then therefore also we'll have an opportunity to bring Penn State students in for opportunities. And I just, I really like the idea of having it as a standing committee. It's, it gives it the seriousness and that it deserves.
Thank you.
Thank you Patty. Steve or Lisa? Steve shaking his head, no, thank you. And Lisa, would you care to comment?
Just thanks for the presentation. I always learn a lot when you come and present to us. So I appreciate that. And we'll look forward to hearing from you next time in the spring.
Great. Thanks Lisa.
Thanks Lisa. Um, and I'll echo everybody's comments of thanks and thanks for your work on this committee, this ad hoc committee that was providing tech, technical expertise to get to our GHD inventory, get that done and prioritize that. Appreciate your work on that. And I believe you are on the, what's called the tag for the region, right? That's also the technical advisory group for the region committee. And then we also have a standing committee at the region, that's something that's changed since we did our resolution in 2017. That's called the Climate Action and Sustainability Committee and elected officials serve on that committee. And we, um, we, uh, one of the main functions of that committee is to implement the climate action and adaptation plan for the region of which we are a significant part. In fact, interestingly, uh, we contribute about 25% of the region's gases. Well, we contribute about 25% of the region's budget as well. So we hold a valid, uh, claim there in our representation on that committee. So I want to offer, um, some thoughts in terms of your suggestion for a standing committee. First, a standing committee of the township has certain requirements, one of which is that, um, I believe Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, they reside in the township. Is that, or is that incorrect?
Uh, yeah, yeah. Typically you would establish a standing committee through an ordinance and you would have township residents serve on that. You would define the terms, whether you were going to make any distinctions by ward representation, et cetera. But yes, it would, they would be representatives of the township.
Thanks. And our current, our current committee that we don't have that requirement because it's a technical committee and admittedly, you know, it would probably be difficult to, I, knowing from experience of, um, trying to appoint people to all of our committees, our volunteer committees, it can be difficult to populate those committees on an ongoing basis. We have solved this problem though, by establishing a standing committee at the regional level. We kind of led that effort, right? Cause we started the ball rolling, then the region was like, we like that ball, we want to play too. So we're going to make a regional climate action plan. We were like, great. So we don't have to do it all ourselves. Now we serve on a regional climate action plan where we're going to cooperate with the region to set priorities. So I have some pretty serious concerns about having competing priorities. I actually don't, I don't want to do that. We, it's, it's not good for relationship building in the region, I guess I'll say. And so we initiated this effort. We've made a lot of system change based on it. So I'm not going to hear anybody saying, if I don't support a standing committee, that doesn't, that means that I don't support change. Or that I don't support initiatives to address climate change. That's not true at all. In fact, we have a regional government that's doing that very thing. So, so I have big concerns about staffing, the, the requirements for taking minutes of a standing committee, when especially then one that's going to have an appointee that is not the same person that's on the standing committee of COG. So right now Pam Steckler is our, uh, elected, uh, appointed official that is serving on that committee at the regional level. So then if we have a committee at the township level, we're not going to point an elected official to serve on that standing committee. It would be another person. And so you'd have these big gaps between the silos of effort when what we're really trying to do is integrate our effort together. So what I would love is if we could really stay focused on doing this as a region and utilize these great skills of this ad hoc committee that is also identical to the tag, if I understand correctly, then utilize the staffing that we're paying for at the regional level to do promotions and education and, and, and do the plan. And then we're going to get a consultant. We're doing all of these things to really, to focus on that, put all our, our efforts there. So we don't have too much of a competing interest and confusion. Um, so, but I love the work and I'm thrilled that we have got this inventory. I think that also we have the same inventory at the regional level, right? So this is what I want to avoid in the future, that there's just one plan, one inventory, one standing committee and that kind of thing. So I mean, we're committed, we're committed.
Absolutely. And I couldn't agree more. I mean, like you summarized, the arc of this was sort of, we started it and then, and then the region came on board and it was like, okay. And I mean, this is frankly, the reason I've not yet delivered a strategy to you because I've been working really hard with Pam on the regional one. And I thought, well, we're not going to duplicate effort and like, we're not going to divide and conquer here. Like we need to all work together and focus.
Unite and conquer. Yes.
Right. So I, I agree with you, but we are, we are trying as a committee to, to make sure that we are fulfilling the duties that you set out when we were charged. And I do think, I do think that it is a useful approach for each of the townships to use Pam's plan as a menu, right? Because certain things will be more applicable to one township than another, you know? Ferguson is a great example of this. There's a lot of really good information in there about, particularly on the adaptation side of things, agriculture. You know, that's not as important to State College Borough as it is to us. And so I think that we can pick and choose priorities from this suite. And that if all of the townships are doing that as they're part of the regional effort, that will work. And, and, but I agree with you, like figuring out, this is a good problem to have, right? At the end of the day, we've got climate action happening at a variety of scales. Like if we're going to have a problem, this is the one to have.
Right. I get, right. I think that it's important though, to also recognize the current, the, the, how our, our government structure is here. Because if we were to establish our own standing committee and then other municipalities did not do so, then there's an imbalance in implementation. And so we really want to be able to, I think, while being committed to it, make sure that we don't, uh, uh, you know, run into a situation where we're actually not cooperating. Anyway, we, we, yeah, um, but we, um, we do appreciate the report and the work. And I heard you say that you would be returning in April and at that time you're, uh, the committee would be providing prioritization of things from the inventory.
Yeah. I, I mean, so, so what I, what I would like our committee to do for, for the intervening months between now and then is to, is to comb through the regional action and adaptation plan and sort of from that glean where we think Ferguson should be focusing its efforts. And I do think, I mean, I, I couldn't agree with you more Laura, actually, that, that we should be focusing a lot of our effort and service in support of the success of the regional plan. Right? I mean, these municipal boundaries don't exactly matter very much for climate action. And so I think that it's, it's great that we did a, did a township-wide resolution and, and we're out ahead of the curve on that. But, but the, the region has the, the staffed resources to be moving this forward. And you know, a lot of the efforts to, to reach out to our community members should come from a regional approach, right? I mean, that just, that just makes sense. So yeah, I mean, I'm happy to talk about this at length. I don't want to take up too much.
Yeah, yeah. But that's great. That's great. I appreciate your comments and, and all. Yeah, yeah. But that's great. That's great. I appreciate your comments and, and all your work again. Um, and I guess we'll be talking about this as a board, I suppose, because we have to. We've, we've, we're on this pathway. We have a resolution. We have a committee. We're thinking about how we want to change or not change in terms of the region. So. I guess more to come. Um, and uh, look forward to seeing those uh, priorities. Um, that you all can um. Can identify for us and um. Thank you so much. And you really are a leader, Brandy, in the entire region and we're lucky to have had your service. Um, here in Ferguson Township. So many, many thanks. And I hope you're able to continue your, your work. Um, at the region or, and or Ferguson Township.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. And next up, we are going to uh, skip Pam Adams for now, but we will be back to that. And next up then will be Dave Prabokka, Township Manager with our local, local response uh, to COVID nineteen. Dave Prabokka.
Thank you very much. And I'll keep it brief. I know we got a long agenda to get to and we're just uh, getting started. So. Um, as you know, I've, I've uh, re uh, kindled these regular updates to the board during the time that we. Uh, find ourselves in an area of high or moderate uh, transmission of COVID nineteen. Just a couple of things to talk about. First, the trend in Center County still continues upward. Um, even despite some reassuring news and forecasting that the numbers may begin to decline and that. A winter surge might be avoided. Um, we had seventeen thousand seven hundred and ten confirmed COVID nineteen cases and two hundred and thirty-five deaths. Uh, as a, uh, per the Department of Health Center County Dashboard as of today. Uh, there are eighty thousand and forty-nine reported negative cases. And the Commonwealth, the number of positive cases reached one million two hundred and three thousand one hundred and eleven. With twenty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty-one deaths. Uh, on vaccinations, Center County data shows that eighty-three thousand three hundred and ninety-four residents have been fully vaccinated, which is up from eighty-two thousand and nineteen. My last report. Uh, another just over sixty-eight hundred have been partially vaccinated, received at least one dose. So the vaccination rate in Center County. Um, fully vaccinated remains at fifty-one point seven percent. And fifty-five point six percent of the population has received at least one dose. Over six point two million Pennsylvanians. Are reported to have been fully vaccinated. Next, as of today, uh, Mount Nittany Medical Center has thirty-five COVID positive inpatients in their care. Ranging in age from twenty-one to eighty-six. Uh, twenty-three of the thirty-five patients hospitalized with COVID nineteen are not vaccinated. There remain four primary variants of concern in the United States. Uh, of the virus. Uh, all Ferguson Township residents are encouraged to, to sign up and receive the COVID nineteen vaccination if they have not already done so. And then recently, as you may know, the Centers for Disease Control is uh, has recommended that moni- moderately to severely immunocompromised. Uh, individuals receive a third dose or a booster shot. Um, of the vaccine. And if anybody has questions about whether they would qualify under those guidelines. Uh, they're encouraged to contact Mount Nittany Medical Center for additional information. Township facilities remain open uh, this week and we do have some staff working partially remote, partially in person. All meetings except where further, except where necessary to be done on site will be conducted virtually until further notice. And we have stopped uh, for the time being, uh, accepting reservation requests for our meeting room space. Uh, for non-municipal use. Um, today it was announced that uh, the. Uh, fall, excuse me, yeah, the fall collection of bulk waste is, has been postponed. Uh, there's not been another date that's set for that, but it was uh, a decision made by COG Administration. Uh, due to the um, low vaccination rate of refuse employees and because they have to bring in additional employees from outside of the. Uh, region, there were uh, concerns that were expressed by advanced disposal. Through the Center Region Refuge and Recycling Program, which ultimately resulted in that uh, event being postponed. Any questions really should be directed to Shelley Mado, uh, the Center Region uh, Refuge and Recycling Coordinator. Um, but we hope to have a new date scheduled for later this fall, uh, as soon as it's available. And the idea is that by then we should have hopefully some additional safety protocol in place to make for it, to provide for a safer event. That, believe concludes my report. I want to thank everybody for your continued patience as we recover from this crisis. And if you have any questions. I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions for Dave? Okay, it looks like none. Um, let's then move on to. Unfinished business where first up will be Pam Adams with the. COG Climate Action and Adaptation Plan Presentation, which should further help us understand. The regional local climate plan situation. Pam, welcome.
Thank you for having me. And yes, um, I'm hoping. I don't have all the answers, but it's good to hear the discussion and have both of um, been able to be here for Brandy's discussion. So. I am going to share my screen to do a presentation. And you should be able to see that now. Um, so. My name is Pam Adams. I'm the Sustainability Planner at the Center Regional Planning Agency. And tonight I'm going to give you an overview of the. Center Region Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. I included the link there. Um, in case there's folks from the public who maybe haven't had the chance to see the report. Hopefully you've all had a chance to at least skim through it and read the executive summary. Um, and first I just want to acknowledge that um. There's a lot of people who helped create this document. I'm sure I have forgotten some people. I already know that I need to add some more contributors on here. Um, but I do hope to recognize everyone who was part of this process. I will point out that um, the Public Services Environmental Committee started it in twenty eighteen. Um, and it's now overseen by the Climate Action and Sustainability Committee that Laura was mentioning before. And as Laura also pointed out, there is a um, Climate Action and Adaptation Technical Advisory Group, which we refer to as TAG. So I just do a little. Special call out to those folks who have been very instrumental in creating this plan. And I'll just start with a little reminder of why we're doing this, because this summer the headlines have been. Really kind of increasing, it seems to me. Uh, maybe it's just because what I'm working on, but there's been some crazy weather happening. And it really shows that um, the local impacts of climate change are being felt here. And this is the reason why the elected officials um, started this process a couple of years ago. Recognizing that we need to help keep costs under control and help protect our community. So in twenty eighteen, um, the objective was set to create a plan to identify pragmatic. And fiscally responsible actions for the six municipalities in the center region to reduce. Our greenhouse gas emissions and also adapt to a changing climate. Hopefully you're, you're familiar with this um, little um. Image here, but. I'm excited to say that we're at milestone number five after two years. We've gotten to this point. Um, and in the CAP, the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, it does explain these different steps on how we got. To be able to develop this plan and I'll provide a little overview of the whole, the whole thing. So that milestone number one, as Brandy pointed out, as far as an inventory. So I'm not gonna try to repeat things here. Other than just that this is our emissions for the community. It's eight hundred and twenty-four thousand two hundred and nine metric tons carbon dioxide equivalent. Um, you'll see that energy for heating and cooling our buildings is sixty-seven percent our largest emission pieces. The report itself gives a brief overview, um, but there is an inventory report that's linked to that um, the cap. To provide more information. Also in this chapter, we've now looked at the actions that are in the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. And charted them out to show that we can reach the target, which is that white dotted line. That forty-five percent reduction, that was the target that was set with the resolution last year to reach our goal in, by twenty thirty. The red line is the baseline that we're basing our emission reductions on. And we're hoping to re, meet that target by. Um, these actions that are identified in this plan. And that's really through policy, education, partnerships and influence. On the left, you'll see the um, six sectors. There's a total of eighty-two actions. And the impact of each of the, of the total of those actions. Um, for emission reductions. And I'll just point out that clean, healthy water. That's already been committed to um, through energy reductions from our water and wastewater authorities. So that number. Um, I feel really confident about. Um, and the other thing I want to point out is that Penn State through their actions. Have been able to reach a thirty-five percent reduction goal, uh, mostly focused on energy. Efficiencies at their buildings and energy. So I do believe um, our numbers are also obtainable. And the last thing I'll just point out is that renewable energy, which is the largest um, reduction that we're looking for. Really will need to be met with utility and state action. So I just want to clarify that. Um, that I, we, we will be definitely looking to advocate at the state level. Um, at, for our utilities to get more um, clean. The other thing I'll just point out is that graph on the right. Between twenty sixteen and twenty twenty-one, there's a slight decline. That's forecasted emissions reduction. Based on that clear path tool that Ferguson uses for their emissions inventory and so does COG. When we forecast what our emissions are today, um, they're predicting a reduction because our grid. Is slightly cleaner than it was in twenty sixteen and um, car efficiency. So. We will see when we do our next inventory, but that is what I want to point out. Uh, milestone number three, a different chapter is on the, our climate vulnerabilities and talks a little bit about the importance of adaptation. And we did a relatively high level, but it's a good starting point. Um, sort of vulnerability assessment, I would say. And it really was informed by participating in the Center County Hazard Mitigation Plan. And also um, participating with Ferguson's Community Resilience Building Workshop. But what this image is trying to explain is that we are going to experience in our region, you know, different regions. Florida has different issues, California, but in our region in central Pennsylvania. We're expected to have increased temperatures. Um, and that will create hazards, right? We can have these extreme heat events that could happen, that happened last year in the Northeast. We had some um, strong heat waves. And the other thing we're expected to experience are these fluctuations in precipitation. So heavy rain events. Um, we, we could also experience increased drought. So it's gonna be sort of these episodic. Heavy rains, but dry periods. And so those leads to different hazards, whether it be tornadoes and windstorms, which we're predicted to see more of. Or increased drought, which we could experience in the future. And those hazards have impacts on our community members, our businesses. Um, and cost money. And so that's some of the things that are listed there. And so really what has come from the experience of these, you know, hazard mitigation plan at the county level as well as. Ferguson's Community Resilience Building Workshop is that. The climate is changing. Um, it doesn't affect everybody equally, but we need to make sure that. Everyone in our community is best prepared so that we can have quicker recovery. Milestone four, to prioritize actions and to create a relevant plan, we really tried to engage with the public. It was during um, a pandemic, but I think we did. Uh, uh, you know, as good a job as we could, we certainly can continue and must continue. To engage the public and extend our reach. But for the past year, we've been talking with stakeholders. Um, members of municipalities, residents and businesses. Um, we did do five sessions with subject matter experts that we had really good turnouts and that really sort of kicked it off. Identifying best practices. We did a survey in the spring, which I'll do one slide on. Not go into full detail, but be able to provide links to more information there. But we got a good response from our um, community members. And then in April, we did a climate forum that was open to the public where we had a hundred and fifty attendees. So. We really are trying to work with organizations and businesses and talk about where we align. On these actions and the benefits they can have to all of us. So for the survey, um. They, these are two slides. The picture in the left shows. The cover as well as the link to get the full um, executive summary or full report. But I listed here the top ten strategies that received the highest support um, on a basis from one to five. Um, the lowest one there, promote energy audits and funding, had a score, a weighted average of three point seven four. So. These were all the, the top ten um, that got the highest support. And then on the left is one of the um. Questions and responses that kind of surprised me, but it's one of my favorites because. When you look at the people who responded, they, seventy-five percent of the respondents. Said that climate change is happening and that include neutral through um, full support. But the other two really are even, you know, have more support to say that addressing climate change is good for our local economy. And also that policymakers should be looking at these scientific projections to make decisions. So I think that's really relevant and important. There is a lot of information in this survey that we used for the plan, but we'll also use with implementation. And then for the forum that happened in April, we had a hundred and fifty people attend. It was virtual. We went into breakout groups, talked about and asked people what their impacts were. That they were experiencing, what opportunities they saw from climate change and what actions they wanted to see taken. And then these are some of the key messages listed here that they um, reported on. And again, there's a full report with that link up there in the. Top left. And so both the survey and the forum really indicate that the community is ready for action. That there is interest. They want to see action now. And I just want to reiterate that these community conversations, we need to continue to have and continue to expand our reach. So that people understand the reason behind the Climate Action Adaptation Plan. Um, it helps build ownership for the decisions that must be made in the future, because some of the decisions might be getting tougher as we go. Um, into the future. It also has helped create these decisions and prioritization of the cap. But it will help with implementation as well. We really want to continue to prepare the community. Um, help it be more resilient and help it be ready um, for the changing climate. Also, when we're looking at prioritizing the actions that are included in the action plan, it was really important to look at the co-benefits. Um, most, all of the actions include co-benefits and we kind of organize them into these four. For creating jobs and economic prosperity, advancing social equity. Fostering resources, security, and also um, another co-benefit of many of them are improving public health. And or local environmental quality. And I'll just show an example here of what that looks like. So. Um, for the objective to improve energy efficiency in existing buildings. One of the actions is to promote programs and really work with commercial building owners through partnerships and such. To have more commercial buildings be more energy efficient. And these are some of the tools listed there. When it talks about co-benefits, it really hits every one of them for those actions. Um, the, those that own the building can see cost savings from reduced, reduced utility ba- bills. By hiring and getting um, people to come into the building to make them more energy efficiency. It does job growth. In the energy efficiency sector, which has been growing in Pennsylvania. Um, at a higher pace than just normal job growth. It also reduces the need for more power plants. Um, it's less need for more fuel resources. And it can provide cleaner air with less pollution. So it sort of hits on each of those co-benefits. Each of the actions also talk about its potential impact in regards to emissions reductions, which are those green leaves, which range from one. To three, with three being more of an impact. And then the little clouds are how much they impact the resiliency of our community. And then finally, I also like to bring up these United S- um, Nations Sustainable Development Goals. Because this is always and should be a framework for how our community can be more sustainable. When we don't just look at one silo, but we recognize that these are all connected. So we. With our Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, we did try to put the actions in the different sectors, if you want to say, but. There's a lot of overlap that, that can be connected. And we need to look at those things uniformly. Um, as a holistically. So. As we're writing the plan, we wanted to make sure. as we're writing the plan, we wanted to make sure that it came across that there's things that can be done and we can do this, like we can do this um attitude by recognizing that there's been a lot that has already occurred through local leadership. Um, so each chapter tries to tell a story of a success. And if we continue to do more and expand it throughout our community, we can do this um goal to meet our our reductions on emissions and adapting to climate change. We also know that partnerships are key to do that, and I've listed some of those in the pictures there. So again, our stories that are included in the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan are really focused on leadership and partnerships. We certainly have work to do on social equity, um but it's recognized as a guiding principle so that we continue to do more, to include and support those who've been traditionally marginalized. We recognize that is something that these actions can actually help um and we want to make sure that happens. And then a guiding principle is that we really, like Brandy said, recognize that we need to help make sure our community members are prepared and that we can be resilient. So the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan has six sectors. These are three of them. For each sector, there's a goal just shown there. And then it's broken into objectives. Under each objectives, there's actions. I'm not going to go through all eighty-two actions, but that's sort of how the plan is laid out. These are the others three sectors, so that there's a total of six sectors. We tried to uh include numeric goals when we could, but for land management and clean, healthy water, they are such broad topics that at this point we have not identified um specific number goals. So this plan is very comprehensive, eighty-two actions. It's not all going to happen in one year. Um, it's really to over a, well, maybe nine-year period now, eight years. Um, we need to work on sort of phase one and we want this phased approach to build buy-in and build momentum, right? And so our focus is really going to be on municipal operations. And again, this, I'm not going to repeat here because Brandy kind of talked about this is like, let's take a look at ourselves, the municipalities and where can we share information? Ferguson Township has this new green infrastructure policy. Let's share it with the other re- municipalities and so that we can all continue to build to be leaders in this climate action. We also need to help disseminate information and build partnerships. Um, the, the new solar co-op with Center County that's currently happening is a good example of that, right? Like, we're just helping disseminate and connect information with the residents to the Solar United Neighbors Organization. And then that number three is we need to also be working on what are the priority actions and the specific things that we need? And this is where the consultant can help us do some of that legwork so we're ready for that next phase um with getting that detail of specific actions and the resources needed to take that next step. So I'm not sure if this is going to answer Laura's question because again, we're going to figure this out as we go, but and I also recognize that there are multiple plans. All, you know, this is just for the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, but that municipalities should all be pulling from the cap ideally for that menu of items that work for them. And then working with your own commissions, staff and group, um like the Ferguson Climate Action Committee, you're the only municipality that has this ad hoc committee. But trying to connect with the tree commission, it really like the cap and a lot of the actions and the sustainability concept is not like one person does it, it should be that we're all looking at it. But basically, we do regional sharing and then it goes back to local. And it's going to be definitely the Climate Action and Sustainability Committee's discussion as far as how we're going to make sure um this um discussion of back and forth for sharing that information and how we do regional efforts, but make it happen at the municipalities is a good discussion to have. So basically, I'm coming to the end here and we are going to be looking at the Climate Action and Sustainability about monitoring, accountability, funding, trying to help disseminate that information out so that actions can be taken. Twenty twenty-two, hoping to do a greenhouse gas emissions inventory for twenty twenty-one. And then also looking at how we're going to do progress reports and get that information out. So we have um definitely that committee will continue to be busy as we do this implementation. As far as what's happening, I will be presenting at all the municipalities this month. We're looking for public and municipal comments back by October twenty-ninth. This is our website that's shown here where um if you go to that C A A P link at the C R C O G dot net website, there's a place to submit your comments. And then at November eighth meeting, the Climate Action Sustainability Committee will look, review the revised cap and ideally forward it to the general forum. And at the end of November, when the general forum meets, it will receive a presentation and consider adoption of the cap through resolution. And that is my presentation, so I can stop sharing and answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Pam. Um, it's a great presentation. I really appreciate that um infinity symbol um slide. Um, I'll have a question specifically related to that, um which I can kick us off with. Um, but um I also wanted to open up the floor to the other supervisors in case they have Patty, a burning question. Patty.
Well, it's not a burning question, but it is. Um, I'm curious, so one of the biggest sort of culprit seems to be the residential piece. Where do you get your information about um like the the lack of energy efficiency in, in residential units? And I only say that because recently, uh, you, we were getting um a home equity line of credit and somebody came out to take pictures of my house and they were surprised that we had a heat pump. And they said, oh, your tax record doesn't show that. And I don't know like how things like that get conveyed or where you're getting your information.
Yep. Good question. We get our utility information from West Penn Power and from Columbia Gas. And then there's some survey information on fuel oils that's less reliable, but eighty-some percent of our emissions are from electricity from West Penn Power directly. So one of the things that we want to delve into more um is sort of a building stock assessment, which is going to be tough because we would be looking at tax records and they're not going to be totally correct is what you're telling me. So we're, we are going to have to make some assumptions, but there's a lot that we can learn from. For example, when you look at the municipalities, when I get the um information from West Penn Power, they split it out by municipalities. And the borough, for example, is much more efficient. When you look at energy, electricity used per household, it's more dense, so it has better efficiencies. But when you compare the other municipalities, there can be some um significant enough differences um that we have opportunities, I would say. But it's, it's kind of high level.
So is there a way there to like sort of when things are being inspected, you know, like home renovations or, or home home sales or something, that there can be a checklist in, in which we can start gathering this information?
Yes. Yeah, really good point. It was one of the things that we were going to talk with the Climate Action Sustainability Committee in November is potential indicators and what we need to track. We obviously aren't going to track every little thing, but we have the code office that is connected to COG, so we should start be looking at renewable energy because right now we don't really have some mechanisms on energy. That's sort of the one piece that we don't have really good information on.
Okay. Good questions, Patty. Pam?
Um, first of all, I think this is a fabulous document. I, I'm very, very impressed with it. I think you did. You and your crew did a great job. Um, I was, I didn't know that this was going on and I got to see it. I was really pretty ecstatic that, that we're doing this. Um. I, in some of the things, um, I, I think you had this slide up where it showed buildings and energy and renewable energy and sustainable trend, you know, the six items. Um. I, 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 is there someplace wh- within the cap where it shows these distinct actions? Um, it, it's like the description is policies and programs and it's sort of like suggestions and yeah, it's not even suggestions, it's just um. It's a, it's a little light in terms of, of whoa, really where we should be going and and I'm wondering if there's a place where uh there might be more specific things in terms of code, if we can buy a certain year uh require solar on every rooftop of every new building and every parking lot. Is, is there anything like that that's built into the plan?
So, good question, and it is kind of generic to squeeze it all into that one um statement, but there is, I have a backup document that's more um under the subject matter expert summary of best practices that it falls under. And it really is, what's going to happen is that's part of this next implementation phase where we dig down into it. But I do have a four-page document that I've been keeping notes on that sort of is all of those details. And so it's not.
So specificity then is going to be coming. That's sort of on, on in that next, the next line.
Correct.
Okay, um. That, I, I'm interested in that.
Thanks, Pam. You muted yourself accidentally. Well, I think you muted yourself accidentally if you're continuing to comment.
Yeah.
There you go.
Okay, yeah, I must have just touched something. Um, there was one spot here where uh you talked about a goal and it seemed, um this was under renewable energy. The goal was transition fossil sources to renewables for ten percent homes and five percent businesses' energy usage. Is it, it doesn't seem like very much. And I'm wondering what the date for that would be. Is, is that by twenty thirty?
It is by twenty thirty. All, yeah, these goals are all for twenty thirty. And I can see, I, I have to look in the document to see if it states that, but it is for twenty thirty.
It's, it, it's like, it's on page sixty. And yeah, I think we need to get the date for that. And then by twenty fifty, what, what would, what would those percentages end up being? More like twenty-five and or thirty.
Yeah, I don't know the exact numbers for those. It's sort of like, there's so much that could be changing that we're going to like do this and a part of our progress report in the next update to the plan, we'll start looking, continue to look, look forward. And it does seem like the numbers are low, but right now um, the number that we currently do for renewable energy homes is I think it's like thirty or fifty and we need over a hundred, we really need three hundred a year. So we have, we have room, opportunity um to get there.
That's why we have sun now.
Yes.
So, I, I, I went into it as soon as I saw it and I, I think it's excellent. I'm, I'm glad that that's there. But I, I think it'd be good to have a date on there and maybe a possible projection, you know, some, something to make people feel like, oh, well, yeah, that sounds like it's going to make a difference, you know?
Yeah.
Um, and then my, my third thing was um about uh, had to do with solid waste and um. There's a lot of transportation involved with that and, and, and weight particularly dumping fee. I don't know what they call it, dumping fees or tipping fees, that's what it is. Um. One, one thing I'm wondering about is whatever happened to the uh organic compostable collection in Ferguson Township? I, I was like chomping at the bit for that after the borough got it and it never came. What, what, I don't, maybe Dave would be better to explain what happened with that because I, I think I spoke with you like years ago about it. We were both in the audience about, a- and you said, oh, yeah, we're, we're investigating that. It should be kept happening in Ferguson soon too, and it just never happened.
I can actually answer it, but Dave, okay, that, um, so it's more complicated. Where you live, you're right next to the borough and it would certainly work. Um, the borough route miles are ninety-six route mi- miles for the week. Um, for the COG, it's two thousand three hundred. So to drive all over using that model, like we thought we could do what for uh the borough is doing, but it, it just didn't make any sense. Our emissions were going to be too much with driving all over to outweigh the benefit because we also saw that the borough wasn't include, like there wasn't as much, we were anticipating a thirty percent reduction and they're experiencing eighteen percent of organic. So we, we had to step back and like we need to do something and we want to, but we have to look at some different models um for larger transportation and maybe have it that there's an inbound. It got more complicated. I'll just
Uh, well, more about it. Yeah, may, or maybe just do a, a a more kind of urbanish area and, and let the rural folks, I mean, they've got big.
Yep, so it, it's.
You can only do so much with your compost pile and they used, Ferguson used to take our, our garden waste for years. They took it and then all of a sudden it was like, oh, no, no, what do we do? And so you got to take it out to, I don't know, was it empty? And sometimes they make you pay for it. It, plus, if you think about that, all of the cars that are traveling to take their garden waste out, uh you need to kind of add that into the transportation against, you know, I mean, I don't know if that was thought of or not, but that's definitely a, a part of the puzzle. So uh unless we could have, you know, more community compost that, that would service more people that are in more of the kind of urbanish area. Um, the other thing, a friend of mine mentioned this to me and I don't, I don't really know anything about it. You may know something about it. Uh, M R N B T, material recovery and biological treatment. That would be for, I, I guess, processing waste prior to dumping it in a landfill. And um it seems to make a lot of sense to reduce quantity. Um, he had said that some landfills do that, that, that they process that stuff. I don't know if if, if we could do it before it, before it even heads out for the landfill, you know? It just seems like it would make a lot of sense to reduce weight by, uh, you know, in terms of the bio- biological treatment, that would be like a lot of water weight and a lot of, you know, kind of fluidy stuff and um material recovery, I guess, would just be things like recyclables that people just jumped instead of uh putting it in their bin. So uh is that something under consideration to, to kind of reduce what we take to a landfill?
Definitely, yes. And there are some things that are being worked out between at the um authority, the refuse and recycling, the recycling and refuse authority, they're working on a strategic plan and they are um investigating it. But if you want, we can talk offline and go through some of the things that are potentially coming. But again, this is where the cap is supporting that waste reduction. But partnering with the recycling and rest refuse authority to have them figure out what's the best um for the big picture. But yes, we are supporting that we reduce the amount sent to the landfill. And I can give you more specifics, but maybe we can do it. You're, I can go into a lot more detail if you want, but not tonight.
No, 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 that's, I just, I, it was just something somebody mentions me and I thought, well, I'm gonna throw it out there and see if that's even a possibility.
So, thanks, Pam.
Covering a lot. Thank you.
Thanks, Pam, and thanks, Pam. Um, so I just, it's to focus on, on potential comments um that we as a board want to send to the region. I don't know if this reflects what you were saying, Pam Steckler, but um, I mean, I would certainly, I, I'm not sure a hundred percent exactly what kind of comments you're looking for. I know too that I'd like to make about kind of overall str-. Kind of overall structure and how we're interacting with cog, but I don't know if you're looking for like content comments yet. Because we're maybe not that far in the process, but if you were, I would say, I think maybe one of Pam's. Comments that she was making that I would support and maybe other board members would too, is to again, take a look at that. calculation for organics pickup and see if there's a way that we can design a system to accomplish it. So I know that would, the way we currently looked at it, it wasn't gonna work, but can we do any kind of decentralization? That would reduce road miles, like, is there another, I know that already Shelley Maddow is working on something. Like pickup sites, but maybe as a board, we wanna comment, and this is a question to the board, do we? Would, would we like to comment that that would be something we'd be really interested in, that would be something we'd like to prioritize? Because we know our residents would really like it and so if we can find a way to do it, we'd be, we'd be thrilled about it, so. Obviously in balance with everything else, so is that a comment the board would like to make or? And or is it time to make those kinds of comments? I see Pam Steckler saying, yes, she'd like to make it, Pam Adams, would it be time to make this kind of comments?
Okay, it's definitely helpful.
Other board members thoughts? Lisa?
Sorry, on that or general?
Well, that first, I wanna finish up Pam first.
Yeah.
Go to others, cuz I'm just trying to be organized about making sure we know exactly what we wanna comment on as a board. So on that first.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, yeah.
Okay, all right, Steve, do you have a yes or a no on that or just kind of go with the crowd?
I, I'm a yes, but.
Yeah.
I think there was a rather significant effort in the analyzing that. And if I remember correctly, there was a significantly greater environmental negative impact than positive impact. Of implementing something like that.
Yep, yeah, but what I think I'm hearing is that there are other ways, like New York has a ton of drop-offs and again, you have to look at. How many people are driving where and what makes sense, I will also say that the U A J is in. Implementing a biodigester and that is something that we're seriously looking at and the. Recycling authority is already talking to the U A J, so we have some opportunities. I don't really wanna go into the whole like spiel on it right now, but I can certainly provide, if you want me to come back at a future time, it, it's really in the. Initial time of we're trying to figure this out, um, but I know Shelley has it on her plate to try to do something. So that maybe we can start with some drop-offs until we have some other opportunities, but I don't, I agree that I don't think that we're gonna look at. Driving all over and picking everybody's stuff up, but does it make sense to do some drop-offs as a pilot, see how it goes? So, that, that sort of, if there's a great, if it's a, basically the Climate Action and Sustainability Committee has to look at priorities. As far as where some of the focus should be, so having input for what municipalities think are priorities. That's helpful, we'll also be looking at, you know, sort of buildings and energy, knowing that that's significant for the emissions reduction, but. When there's things that are important, those are the types of things, content, I'm looking for comments in general, overall.
Okay, so let's wrap this up on this particular comment, I think we have a majority to say we're interested in it, obviously, we don't wanna support it if it's. Like a bad idea, but we are interested in this particular idea, Pam, did you have another comment that you wanted to?
There was one more thing that I've.
Well, okay.
Finished with this one and then I'll mention the other thing.
Okay, go ahead and mention the other thing.
The other thing was, um, I, I asked about the actions and. Could there be like a sheet of, of kinds of things that people could do or like some more specific than just promoting this? That, or suggesting that, or requesting that, yeah, it, it would, I don't know, I just feel like it would be really nice to have something. That was concrete.
So Pam, you're asking right now about.
We can do.
Like a list of actions that a resident could take eventually.
Resident, sounds good. Business or, you know, whatever, whatever area, it just would be nice to have a listing of real specific things that. People could think about.
Empowering them to do things, makes sense, okay, Lisa, you were next.
Thanks, Pam, thanks for the report and the presentation, I thought the report or the plan is just really well laid out. And was easy for a layperson such as myself to follow and, and read and understand, so. Really, really, uh, well done, um, one thing I wanted to mention in the transportation area is. In, in a future iteration of the plan or maybe even in the specific implementation steps, I'd love to see more. Focus on CADA and shared transit, specifically with CADA, maybe like that first mile, last mile. Where people are either walking to the bus stop or from the bus stop and making sure those routes all connect. And then likewise incorporating some safe routes, routes to school initiatives where. You're providing that one mile from a school where students and families can walk and bike, so that involves some more cooperation. From SCASD too, so however we can integrate those things, I think are really practical steps.
Yep.
Sorry, were you looking for a board comment there? Because I would be supportive of the idea of looking at schools, it's kind of like that eighty-twenty rule. Where you wanna focus your resources where, on where you can get impact and if there's lots of people back and forth, back and forth in a certain timeframe, it seems like a good target. So are you asking Pam that question or are you asking that question and asking for a comment?
Yeah, both, so I'm wondering if maybe there is something in this, in the implementation plan that I. Don't know about or if we can incorporate this as a comment, if there's support for that.
So, I've heard from Pam and now from Lisa and I have under my transportation sheet. Those things that you just mentioned, so what I, um, there's a link on our website, but it's kind of buried, but I will work on those. That toolkit, if you wanna say, and I can't remember what I called them, um, cuz I, I have time and I will maybe be able to include that as an appendix. Or some attachment link, maybe it'll be another resource, um, but that type of specifics. We, we have, as far as, that's just gonna be like adding a hundred more new things, but it's specific. So I think it can maybe address both of your issues, but you certainly should make it as a comment, I've written it down here. Um, as far as those priorities that Lisa mentioned, but I do know those are there and this again is where it's like, this is a big plan and. We need to start narrowing it down into what we're gonna be doing, um, so. I don't, I don't, I'm not necessarily answering your question, but I, I'm, I'm hearing you.
Right, no, that's fine, I appreciate that and I think, yeah, if we, if the board supports that as a comment, I guess it could fit under either one or two. Under that transit section of. Uh, traffic operations maybe or the, um, reduce the trips with one driver, so. Yeah, if there's.
I'm sorry, Lisa, what's the comment, exact, what's the comment exactly?
So that would be to include in the implementation or in the action steps that are maybe an appendix to the plan. Focus on CADA, their first mile, last mile, um, and I was getting really specific with that, maybe it doesn't need to be that specific. But I was trying to think practically, you know, steps we could include in this first version of the plan. Um, and then promoting the safe routes to schools and, uh, those bike and pedestrian accommodations specifically. And to work with SCASD, so I guess those are three different things, the cat of. Safe routes to school and cooperation with SCASD.
That sounds great to me, Lisa, I would support that. Seeing heads nod, so it looks like we have another board comment, do you have any other comments, Lisa, that you'd like us?
Thank you very much.
Sure, Patty or Steve? Steve's got a no and Patty's got a no, okay, well then, I guess we're, we're up to me, um, my questions. Are really just about sort of what I was touching on with Brandy earlier and I was wondering if you could go, it's also something. Uh, in a previous, uh, I think a previous iteration of this presentation, I meant to ask this question, I think it was to the cast committee. Then I forgot, there's a slide, I took a picture of it here on my phone, let me get this many multiple screens up here, um. The slide was implementation of cap, phase one, and then it had one municipal operations, two and three. So you can pop that up if it's convenient for you Pam Adams, if not, I'll just continue to talk about it. Great, there it is, so, um, number one is municipal operations and I've seen this a couple times now. I'm always making the assumption that that includes cog operations. And I actually can't see Pam Adams' face to see if she's nodding yes.
It does, it does, it does, I, in the, um, I think in the plan, it says C R C O G and I apologize. To me, municipal and cog were, were all the same, but it does.
Okay.
Dog, I'll, I'll change that, get that.
Okay, no problem, I thought, I thought that's what it was, okay?
Yep.
But it also does include municipal operations, it's cog operations, municipal cog buildings, municipal cog parks. Parks, okay, fantastic, that's what I thought, okay, so that, I guess, is leading into my other point, which is. We're the only, Ferguson Township is the only one that has this other, uh, committee, right? The rest of the region is relying on the C A S and their elected official appointees to be passing the message. And to getting the policy lined up, so could you go to the, the, um, the yes precisely? So, I agree with the concept here of. The infusion through all of our township, however, I also agree with the concept, concept of infusion through Harris Township. And infusion through Patton, State College, girl, you get my point here. They don't have that middle circle on the left side of the infinity loop. And so they're gonna have to all, they are all gonna have one pattern and we, if we keep this other committee. Are gonna have a different pattern, whereupon we have more silos of information, because what they're gonna have is they're gonna have their rep. For their, for the cast at the regional level, be the person, right? And they're gonna go straight through the policymakers and the manager to the other spokes of their township. And that's great, that's how we want it to be, the way we're setting it up here is that that person kind of. It becomes. A broken link or something. Because our climate action committee, who is not attending the C A S elected official meeting. Doesn't have responsibility to attend that, they're gonna be doing this separate but equal process and I'm afraid of this. Kind of a structure being really out of sync with the rest of the region and how they're doing it. And also, I, I, I kind of wanna be, I wanna be involved with that policy in the same way that the rest of my, the rest, the rest of the region is. So, is the expectation, and I'm heading toward a comment, I'm hoping, and it's actually, I'd like a group question to be posed. Is the expectation that all of the other municipalities are going to make their own action committees? Or is the expectation that we're all participating regionally in this effort, sharing regional staff? Having regional conversations about priorities, identifying the best strategy together. And then going about implementation at the cog level and the municipal level, which one of those models are we using? Can we, can we, because I'd like to know if the expectation is the rest of the municipalities are gonna do what we're doing. Um, because if not, we're gonna be utilizing the cog staff in a different way than they are, I think. So, so can we put the question out? As a board? Is the rest of the region expected to be, in order to implement this plan, do we each need to have our own? Climate action committee or is the expectation that the region is making that effort and we can as municipalities rely on that? Regional effort, could we get that question out there to cog, so we have clarity on, on that? To other board members, I, I know Pam could ask it if we want her to ask it, but right now, it's not clear to me. Because we've heard one, our rep saying, we should have a standing committee to be able to implement this, but we wanna implement on the regional level. Do we need that standing committee or can we rely on the regional effort to be participating in part of it? Conversely, is the expectation that the rest of the region is gonna have their own standing committee to implement a cog, well. I don't know, I guess they'd do their own resolutions too, I'm not sure how that would work, but, um, could we, could we ask that question as a board? So we have clarity going forward.
I don't have the answer, I'll just say.
Yeah, I don't either, I don't know if anybody does, Steve.
I think we can ask that question, I don't know that there's anyone who's gonna be able to answer it for you, other than. The other municipalities and they may or may not be interested in answering it, I mean.
It was something that I was going to ask the Climate Action and Sustainability Committee and point out. You're the first municipality that I'm speaking to and I was kind of excited to be able to use this image. Because you have a climate action committee and the others don't, so that when I go to the other groups, it's. Go potentially gonna look a little different and I'm like, but maybe I'm gonna leave it there so that they see that. What I have experienced is Ferguson Township is more engaged in a lot of these climate actions. And maybe it's because you have this climate action committee, so in some ways, it would be very helpful for all of them to have it. Because there's policymakers, which are your elected officials that come to the climate action sustainability, but then there's like the actual doing. And at the regional level, I, I'm a staff and I'm going to do and help try to formulate a template for energy management. And, and try to help, you know, what we're doing at cog and sharing that information and, and getting that back and forth, but there's a lot of. Work that volunteers, if we're all lucky to get them, can help with if it's well coordinated. I, I recognize all the points, so it, it's a, it's definitely a good discussion for going forward.
So, just to explore this a little bit, I think it's, what you're saying is really important because our, my expectation, I'll speak for myself and. I guess I think the other elected officials is that because this is a cog program. It's cog staff that will be implementing it and I think that there's similarities between both. This and the parks comprehensive plan. Because each plan requires that the municipalities. Do things independently, not just in conjunction with cog. And. In that case, there's not even a cog committee that is permitted to try to implement. Any of that comp plan, there's no, there's no, the parks capital committee is not. Charged with implementing that, no elected official at cog is, even though there is a significant. Commitment of staff time, finances, policy required to implement that plan. So, here we are in the climate action plan and we do have a standing cog committee. And they are charged with implementing that and we made the decision early on to include municipal operations and grounds. In that plan and the assumption was that that regional staff would be responsible for that. Up into the point of implementation, but that would involve prioritization, getting agreement between the regions elected officials. To move certain priorities over others. Maybe it would be, uh, understanding. How we can get to a certain point of reduction and competing in a fun way against each other. To get that reduction down, um, and those are like really important, I think, elements of implementing that plan. That will be lost if we then lose that connection of that elected official who's seated on that standing committee. That's directing staff, that's implementing the plan and then we. And then we have volunteer bodies that are simply advisory to our body when our body has a representative on the Climate Action and Sustainability. See what I'm saying there? It's like we're making a silo as opposed to integrating more. So I think, I think the question that we're posing should get enough conversation around that that we can, in Ferguson Township, make a good decision about how we wanna proceed in the regional effort. But it, it would be important for each of the municipalities to understand how much staff support will be given to us as municipalities in achieving those goals. Because we are asked to fund like the consultant, and we're asked to fund like the promotions person. And my assumption is that we're gonna fully be able to rely on them for that plan, which includes us. And if that's not correct, I wanna understand what their scope, the scope of that would then be, if that makes sense. That's really the only, that's the big comment. I have the big comment of how, how we can get to the point where we can, as a region smoothly implement the plan, because it's fantastic. So I think if that hasn't inspired any additional comments, I believe we are ready to move on. Okay, it looks like nobody's hand is up. So Pam and Brandy, again, thank you so much. And good luck, Pam, at the other municipalities. So look forward to, to hearing more about this regional conversation.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, sorry. Next up, we have the COVID-19 masking ordinance discussion, and I think we could probably have this discussion and then maybe take a quick break afterward. So this will be introduced by Dave Paboka, Township Manager.
Thank you very much. So this item was requested in response to the trending numbers of COVID-19 cases in Center County and in Ferguson Township. Similar ordinance was enacted by the Borough of State College in about mid-September, which is, which establishes a requirement that all businesses and establishments that are open to public access require that there be masks or appropriate face coverings worn indoors. It also has a requirement that public establishments post signage at the front door indicating that masks are required on entry. The township's not had this ordinance in place since the disaster declaration from the, from Governor Wolf's office was rescinded. And there is still the ability through ordinance for this requirement to be reintroduced. So if the board were interested in doing something akin to what our colleagues at State College Borough did, the appropriate next steps, I think, would be to direct staff to draft an ordinance, which would then be reviewed by the board, and then presumably advertised for public hearing at a future meeting. I did include with the agenda the version of the ordinance that was adopted in the Borough of State College.
Thank you so much, Dave. Would anyone care to kick off this conversation? Patty?
All right, I'll be brave here. Actually, I'm probably not in favor of going ahead with this. I think we're dug in on either sides, and I feel like people who wanna wear masks are wearing masks, and people who don't, it becomes confrontational. So I think as everything that I've been hearing and following is that maybe we are sort of waning, but it's hard to know. Mount Nittany isn't overwhelmed, which was always sort of the idea of the many different approaches. We have vaccines, and so I think I'm leaning to, towards not implementing a mask mandate.
Thank you, Patty. Brave soul. Others? Steve?
Well, I, I was initially fully in favor of it, but a couple of weeks ago, I did go talk to a number of business owners in the borough after they had enacted this. And the one, there was a whole range of responses to it. But the general thing I took away from it was that business owners don't like being put in the position of enforcing municipal ordinance. And people are going to come into their businesses without masks. There's no way around that. And my, I guess my, my initial support for it was it gave the businesses a, something to point to, to say, it's not just my role, it's, you know, it is a regulation, but the, pretty much the response I got was, I don't wanna enforce your regulation. If, if you want to require masks and have your police department uniformly enforce it across the whole municipality, that's your business. But if you want me to enforce a regulation that you've written, then it becomes my business, and I don't wanna be part of it. There were some exceptions, but in general, that was the response I got. So I don't, I think on that basis, I'm not really in support of it, because I think people are going to go into businesses without masks. And I'm not sure that it's fair of us to put that enforcement on somebody else, so.
Okay, thank you very much, Steve. Lisa or Pam? Pam?
I sort of saw the other side of that coin, Steve. Having been a business owner, for me, I, I think I would have felt if there was a mandate by the municipality, it would be a lot easier to request people to do it. Like you wouldn't have people in your face saying, well, I don't wanna do this. And then all you have to say is, hey, that's, that's the law here in Ferguson Township, so like it or lump it.
And I guess the, the response I got though from business owners is people don't accept that as an answer. They just simply say.
I wouldn't want my employees to be exposed either. You know, there, there's a certain thing where you feel like, well, if, if you're getting a lot of public coming in and they're not masked, even if your employees are masked, they're still risking illness off of others not. It's not that big of a deal, is, is what I feel like. And I, and I think we've gotten into this craziness with it, that now we have to make a law. So I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, Pam. Thank you, Pam. And Lisa?
This was hard, because I do want everyone to wear a mask. I think it helps, and I'm appreciative of businesses that require them. But I'm just too concerned about enforcement and putting it on the staff at a business to enforce it, or our zoning officer, or I'm feeling that the burden of enforcement is going to outweigh any benefit, because people will still not wear them. I feel like at this point, people who are going to wear them are going to wear them, and people who aren't, aren't going to. So, you know, the schools require them, our municipal buildings require them. They are required in certain areas where people are gathering for a long time, and so I'm not supportive of it at this time. You know, hopefully the vaccination rates keep going up. That's what we need.
Thank you, Lisa. Yeah. Oh, Pam, did you wanna, sure.
One more thing. I remember more towards the beginning of this. Stores were really into it. I mean, you know, they had people at the door making sure you had your mask on, and you couldn't walk in if Wegmans even had it. You had to stand in line, and they only let so many people into their business. And if, if the total number of people in the store, no matter how big it was, was over a certain amount that you had to wait. We've just gotten really lax, and, and I think at that time, everybody was doing it. You know, if you wanted to go in that store, you just did it, so. I, I think, I think people have just been so tired of it that they don't wanna do it anymore. And maybe that's a reason why we should, I don't know.
So, Steve?
It's hard.
I, I would just say in response to that, what I was hearing too is, at that time, people didn't have a vaccine, or not everyone had that opportunity. Now, still, kids don't have that opportunity yet, but the, again, the thing I was hearing from talking to people was, if someone is, you know, not vaccinated by their choice, you know, that's the best protection. The mask offers a little more, but the best protection's the vaccine, and that's up to each person to decide. So I, I think that the change in attitude you're seeing has come along with the widespread vaccination. Stores, now there are still some stores that do require it and enforce it. I've been in several that, but it's outside of the borough, it's the stores, you know, the choice of the business. And I, like I say, the thing I was hearing is the businesses that don't want to make that choice and enforce it themselves felt that having that enforcement as part of something that, you know, there was not their choice to do, was a burden that they didn't want. And as a matter of fact, a number of them said, we're just not gonna enforce it.
Can I make a distinction? I, I think, may I make a distinction? I think that right now, we're talking a little bit about the Borough's ordinance that I think shifted enforcement responsibility to the, the business owner. And theoretically, I don't think we'd have to have them as being our, like, I think we could have a different ordinance that required it, but really didn't put them on the front lines of enforcement and could allow them to call if they needed enforcement. That, that said, I'm not necessarily in favor of doing this right now. I, I think, I mean, our vaccination rate in Center County is appalling, let me say, quite, quite publicly and frankly. It's appalling to me that our vaccination rate is that low. The, the level of what must be some sort of like anti-science conspiracy theory thought that must be rolling around out there is terrifying to me, frankly. But I think that that kind of environment, it really is true that us just making ordinance that might really seem, seem to be putting business owners in the position of enforcing. If that's what it would look like, would be just a very bad decision in this kind of a climate where we have really irrational people that are vehemently opposed to these kinds of things. So I would be concerned about that. So I would like us to be able to revisit this if conditions were to change, and we were interested in taking a more assertive stance on enforcement of something like this, because it would be required for public health. And I know that Mount Nittany Medical Center is supposed to be coming to the COG General Forum to give us a report this month in October. So we should be able to hear straight from them about numbers and how they are affecting our health services. Because on the other hand, it certainly is a statement to ask to require masks, because, you know, many of us in the community are having to put off various kinds of healthcare, because there still is an impact on, on our medical system, even if it's not, quote, overwhelmed. We've had to take measures to make sacrifices, to make sure it isn't overwhelmed, to really enable people that simply refuse to get vaccinated and do the right thing. So I'd like us to make sure that we continue to monitor the situation, and that if it does, if the time does come that warrants us to take stronger action, that we are, are willing to do that and put the township's strength behind that. So I guess if, if nobody is inspired to make the motion in the agenda, we can finish up any last comments and close this, close this item. Any last comments? Okay, as promised, we're gonna take a brief recess. I have 9:25, let's say 7 minutes. So what's that? 9:37, 9:32. Let's try to make it back about 9:32 or so. Great, thank you. Let's try to make it back about nine thirty-two or so. Great, thank you.
Hello?
Hello.
I'm on the other line with the Zoom. They're gonna probably come on in. They're still talking about it, but at least there's two.
All right, we're about to get started again. And Pam, just as a warning, the next agenda item is gonna be, uh, yours. When we get started here, so. Next up, we have. Uh, last item under unfinished business that we added by motion at the beginning of the meeting. Was to pull the board member request, plastic bag impact fee ordinance from the consent agenda. And allow some discussion and if we're ready, um, some action. Uh, to move it, uh, to staff. So with that, I will turn it over to Pam. To introduce the item for discussion. Pam, you're up.
Thank you, Laura. Um. Well, this is something I've been working on since twenty seventeen. It's been a long haul and, um. I'm, I'm feeling like we're getting close, so I'm getting kind of excited about it. Um, basically, I, I think everybody knows that the science is really clear on this already, that plastics are. Damaging our environment and they're a threat to the health and welfare of. Wildlife and humans alike. And, um, that we should really be doing something about this. Of course, I'm sure everybody already knows about the giant plastic garbage patch in the middle of the, uh. Pacific Ocean between California and Hawaii, the great Pacific garbage patch that's like twice the size of. Um, Texas and many stor- well, a few stories deep. And it's only getting bigger. COVID has had a, a, a real negative. Um, impact on, on plastics because of all the PPE and masks and. Plastic shields and it, it's just added a lot to it and all the takeout stuff. Um, so. Uh, basically what I had started with was, um. I guess I, it was a petition that I started with to, to the township. Um, requesting a fee to ban and. I came to feel like we should start with five things that would be. The, the low hanging fruit, which we can hopefully add to later. Um, that would be single-use plastic bags, the carry bags, which everybody's familiar with. Flying in trees and things. Um, plastic, a single-use plastic straws and stirs and also styrofoam. Uh, which is expanded polystyrene. Styrofoam is really, I guess, a trademark. Cups and boxes, so. Um. We were. On the eve of beginning our own ordinance on this. Philadelphia already has one which, uh, went into effect on October first. And, uh, their, Narbor, Pennsylvania has one and Westchester has one. I think I sent out their, um. Ordinance as a template for us. I, I think it's an excellent ordinance. It's very well thought out. And we would only have to like tweak a few things if, uh, we wanted to use that. Um. So, uh, basically. What we're talking about is, is a, something that's based on fossil fuels, which is another thing we need to stop doing. So. Uh, and it's not biodegradable. Go, it, it breaks down into tiny bits called microplastics, which everybody has heard of. I'm sure by now there was that study that was done. Uh, in Pennsylvania, and I think it was something like. Sure, they checked fifty-three sites and every single one of them. All, all of the, the waterways had, um, microplastics in it, in, including. Spring Creek, I think it was. That was one of them, so. Um, I hope everybody's looked at the, at the Narbor's, what I, uh, I, I think it's great. And, you know, again, we'd have to change a couple of things in it, but not that much. They, they also have on their. A website. You know, information about it, like it's just, ah, man, it doesn't come up because of that picture thing. Hmm. I guess it won't do it. Um, but they have, um. A, a, a nice information thing that's two-sided, one sheet that, uh, all the businesses can. Copy, you know, I guess they have it in a PDF format that's easier to, to. Copy and they can have, so, so that everybody's kind of uniform in the information that they're giving out. And basically it would be, um. They also have a question and answer thing too, which is, is pretty nice. Um. So basically it would be. Passing the ordinance, having six months worth of, or. That's debatable, maybe only four months, I don't know, but I, I, I was thinking six months of education. Getting materials out there, making sure, uh, at point of sale. Or, or registers have information about it, that it's going, be going into effect. And have it go into effect in six months with a fee. I started at a quarter, but a lot of people seem to want it to be lower, so I'm willing to go to fifteen cents. And, um, after people have to pay that fifteen cents. To get their bags, then six months later, by then. They'll have realized they need to have something else, an alternative. And that's when the complete ban would come into effect. The way, uh, Westchester's is written. Um, I think Steve would like this, that it doesn't use the word ban. It just says, uh, I don't know how they put it, but they, they managed not to use the word ban. So, I, I know he didn't like that, so it's, it's more regulatory. Uh, but it, but it does end up. With, uh, uh, basically a ban. So that's kind of it. Um, I don't know if you need more information as to why. I think everybody's probably pretty well caught up on that. Um.
Thanks Pam, that's great, that's great. I can, uh, take it for a second and just, um, uh, get a little dialogue going here. Um, so, what we have in our agenda tonight is the ordinance that the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors. Had previously be, been considering. Um, we were in the middle of a process when, um, at the state level, there was a bag. A ban on bans for bags. Um, there was a ban on bans, so we stopped the process. Um, and where we were.
Seen that, actually, we hadn't even seen what Dave had worked on. We never got to see it.
So this was the first, we were in between. Having Dave work on it and seeing what Dave did.
That Monday, that Monday. That Monday it was to be presented and that Friday night was when Corman put the kibosh on it.
So here we are now, a couple of years later, um, and we are in the middle of a pandemic, that's the truth, um, but. Um, it seems like the, um, gestalt of the day is to manage multiple crises. So we've got the climate crisis and we've got the pandemic crisis. And here we are at the local level, trying to do our best to manage multiple crises. While, um, really supporting our business community and our residents in receiving all the services that they're accustomed to. So, um, here we are in our conversation. So what we have in the agenda. Is an ordinance that, um, is really geared towards the, the bags, plastic bags. But since the time that we've worked on this, um, there have been other ordinances and then, um, other. Uh, communities that have worked on things like this that have included other single-use plastics. So one question in a larger way, right, and we can look at other examples. Pam has brought a couple to the table. Um, is, do we wanna, um, sorry, there's a net. Um, do we wanna just limit this to bags or do we wanna potentially include other single-use plastics? Um, so how far do we want to take this? Again, the ordinance only has the bags. If we want to have a discussion tonight, I'm not sure how far we get. If we have consensus that we might want to include more, then that's direction we would want to give to staff. Whether it's tonight or in our next conversation. Um, in terms of the ordinance in the agenda, I saw ten cents. Pam also mentioned fifteen. There's also twenty-five, um, cents that was mentioned, uh, there in, in the ordinance that we have in front of us. There's, um. A one-year period before implementation. We, uh, we see now Philly has done theirs. They've had different phases of implementation. Do we want to learn from that? Do we want to stick with what we have? Um. Uh, let's see if I hit some other differences. Um. Also, I, right, I believe in our current ordinance as presented. Um, there is no talk of any complete ban and then tonight there was just a mention of eventually some complete ban. Without saying the word of complete prohibition kind of thing. Um, I also noticed there seems to be a lot of detail given about what, um, constitutes a reusable bag. And do other ordinances go into that level of detail? Is that a good definition or is that like too much almost? Okay, so, so these are.
Recycle stuff, there was, there was stuff included in there, uh, on metal and glass and that's, that's, that's.
Nobody's gonna be the recycle, the, uh, reusable bag.
That doesn't pertain to it.
So, okay, so let's get some conversation going. Pam and I have talked briefly.
Wanted to add one more, one more little thing. The fee would, uh. Say the fifteen cent one, ten percent would go to the business and five percent will go to the borough, the township. Uh, basically, both would be required to use it for environmental education. Um, connected to this, so, uh, if it, or. Giveaway bags were, you know, I mean, there's, there's a lot of different kinds of ins and outs that. When people worry about, uh, poor people being able to afford bags. Uh, we might be able to provide some, gi- give some to the food bank. I mean, there's, there's a lot of different options out there and they can always use a box too. There's not. That, I don't think that that should be, uh, a worry in terms of the fifteen cents. Everybody can make a bag out of something, even a pillowcase.
Okay, so, I want to just hear, uh, from any other supervisors that want to just give some initial thoughts, some specific thoughts. Some direction, um, on what's been discussed or presented. Steve, you look like you're ready. There you go.
Sure. Um, yeah, I guess I'm, I'm okay with, uh. Essentially the. The first part of this, which is have the fee on, uh. You know, the bags. Um, I mean, I've seen Aldi do that. For their own business model, charge for, for bags and. Most people, I think, the shop there bring their own, so it, it does work. Uh, I don't know that I'm in favor of going to not allowing them at all. I mean, I, I think the, the fee is fine. Uh, in terms of the question of do we want to limit the bags. I would, uh, have a real problem with including straws as a. I, uh, item in here. I'm, I'm fine with the bags, but I know that there are people who. Uh, have medical reasons, they need to be able to use a straw. And I know you can bring your own and that sort of thing, but I'm, I'm not, not in favor of that as a way to go, so. That would be, I mean, at this point, I, I would favor, uh, or, you know, I, I would support the idea of, uh. Fee, I think the fee should go to the store. I think. If we start, uh, making it part go to the store and part go to the township, we're getting some real complications. In terms of. Then it becomes partly a fee and partly a tax. And I, I don't know, I'll look at Dave, but, uh, I think that would really complicate it quite a bit in terms of, uh. That if not, then maybe, I think it would.
Good thought, Steve, yep. Anything else right now? No, okay. Uh, Dave, can we get a, a brief answer or thought on Steve's question? Um, the fee, if it was split between the township and the store, would that cause complications? Would it be then like a tax-type fee? Um, how would that complicate or, and or simplify the, um, ordinance?
I mean, I, I think the easiest as far as administering the program would be to allow the property owners, the store owners, business owners. To hold on to the, the revenue, but because it's an impact fee. There would need to be some demonstration that the proceeds from it are being used to combat the problem. So, I, I don't know that there's any way that you can approach this, be it. Allowing the property owner to keep the, the fee or the township or splitting it. That would really reduce the administrative burden. I'd have to think through it a little bit more, but regardless of who has it and has to use it. Uh, use the funds for some purpose, we, the township, would need to have some kind of reporting in place. That business owners would then presumably submit to us for, uh, somewhat of a regular review annually. Quarterly, whatever makes sense, where we can ensure that the proceeds generated from that impact fee are being used for then their intended purpose. As opposed to just place back as profit to the business.
That makes a lot of sense. Thanks, Steve. And Patty.
Well, I think that was sort of why some of the ordinances had the. Um, the fee going just to the store, but then they put. Maybe the bags needed to be forty, made from forty, forty percent post-recycled materials. So then that fee was in essence using post-conse- consumer recyclables. That's a lot of syllables. Um, and, and that in and of itself was like reusing and. Therefore, meeting the goal and, um.
That makes a lot of sense. So if you connect that definition with the impact fee purchase. Then that makes a lot of sense. You don't want them just like cutting the box in the back room and be like, here's your box. You want the store to be putting that impact fee into. You want the store to be putting that impact fee into recyclable bags and then distributing them. That makes sense as rules for that. Rules for consumers doesn't make as much sense. Okay, that makes sense.
Because I think it was then that those are more expensive to buy when you get the bags that are made, like the paper bags that are made from 40%.
Yeah, that was, the 40% was for paper bags. That was, that was including allowance for paper bags rather than plastic.
And I think they're more expensive as a supply to purchase. So that's why the fee met that.
Oh, so wait, then I was misunderstanding. So what you're saying is the impact fee money could be used to buy brown paper bags if they had 40% retype recycled content. Okay, click. Okay.
There was also, actually, some of them had built in a fee also for the, for the brown paper bags to eventually eliminate all bags so that people carry their own. There were some ordinances that had a fee built in for the paper bags as well.
Okay, any other thoughts before I try to make some sort of synopsis of what we discussed? Lisa.
So I this is kind of like the mask ordinance. While I wish that everybody would use a reusable bag at all times, I'm really concerned about putting an additional burden on our local businesses and their staff right now. So that said, so I'm concerned about the timing of this. But when this was first discussed, I was supportive and still am of having a fee for the bags. I, we've probably all been and shopped in places where you had to pay a fee for a bag or bring your own. And it's not a big, a big deal once you're used to it. So I wouldn't be supportive of a ban, but I would be supportive of a fee. I would not go above the 10 cents and I think even when I was thinking back on this, we had it at five or 10, but I guess it was 10. And I thought in the, some of the examples, I guess that we read where like Patty was saying that the fee goes back to the store to purchase the paper bags that use recycled material or reusable bags to give to their customers. I think that makes sense. I wouldn't want the, the fee in any way to come back to the township that even if it were to be used for some type of environmental or climate action project, I think that is sticky. I just, I think that 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 fee needs to stay with the business. I'd maybe put a one-year timeline on imposing this. I think it said that businesses could apply for a waiver if they still had a stockpile of plastic bags to get through. I guess that wouldn't be applicable if they were charging for them. And then I have a question about what type of staff time this is going to occupy to create and enforce. So, you know, we probably don't have that information tonight. I wouldn't expect it. But, you know, I think that's a big question. Our staff is really being pulled in a lot of different directions. And so I just want to make sure that we're aware of what time they're going to need to commit to getting this up and running.
All great questions and comments. Pam, did you want to say something?
Yeah, in terms of staff time and cost to the township, that was part of my reasoning to to split it. So that we would cover any costs that the township incurred, especially if we would be giving out educational materials so that every bought, every business had the same information. And in terms of the store isn't really, the store isn't really going to be making this. You know, same thing with the masks. If it's an ordinance, the onus is off of them, you know, the onus is on us. Because it's an ordinance of Ferguson Township. So they don't need to do anything in terms of enforcement. They just have to abide by how it works. But I think to not have a ban at the end of it sort of undermines the whole point of it. The whole point of it is to have people stop using single-use plastics, period. They're, they're just such a detriment to the whole planet. And we're suffocating the planet with them. We have to stop using them. Actually, we have to stop using fossil fuels and that's what's used to make plastics. So.
Okay, so let's, so let's, let's talk about where we have consensus and then see where we want to go from here. If we want to continue a discussion or if we want to have some of these things put into another, a new draft that incorporates some new thoughts. So let me, let me see. Oh, I also have, I have a thought too, before I want to make a synopsis of everyone's thought. So my, my thought is about people who are really strapped for cash where that additional cost could, depending on five cents, 10 cents, 20 cents, whatever we end up with there, could actually affect their ability to feed themselves or others. And so I, I wonder if, if the fee can be used to offset that cost to them somehow. I know that the farmer's market, we took SNAP benefits and we took another fresh food program benefit from our consumers this season. And we did have somebody that was in charge of tracking that. But it wasn't, it wasn't burdensome. It's a very different scale and everything. But I guess my point is that the idea of an organization doing an internal, an internal accounting to be able to do something like that might be possible. So I would, I in this ordinance, want to make sure that we're sensitive to those that are already needing assistance to provide for themselves, that we make sure that we elevate that priority as much as this other priority, again, like managing, competing, very high priorities. It's what we do. So, okay, with that, I think we all are in favor of moving forward. We all seem to like the idea of the fee. I think that at least two of us do not want to move on to ban at this point. But I don't know if that's a two, three or a three, two. So I'm going to have to ask. Patty, what do you think about the eventuality of a ban as opposed to right now, just focusing on fee? Patty, I'm going to ask you. Or is it too soon to tell? We don't know.
I, it's too soon to tell. I think, you know, education is a process. And so a step in the right direction is the fee. So I guess I'm not, yeah. I mean, there are times when, you know, it's handy and I get it. Yeah. So I think I'm just sticking with the fee right now.
Okay. And Pam, I know your position, but now I'm just trying to move the conversation along just to get some, some alignment right now.
I just made two little notes here that Steve was talking about straws. We have paper straws. They don't have to be plastic.
I'll get to that. I'll get to that. I'm just going to go through kind of each one. Sorry, I'm trying to keep track of each. So just we, right now, I think we have consensus around supporting moving forward with the fee. But I don't think we have consensus right now with moving forward with fee to ban. And and we can change our minds by the end of this discussion, but I'll just say that. And then move on to, we'll go to what Pam brought up next, the items that it would cover. I am not opposed to broadening it, unlike, unlike Steve didn't want the straws. I agree with Pam. In fact, I sent an email about a startup that's doing the paper straws. So I'm open to including other things, but I want to have, of course, this is preliminary dialogue. I want to have continued dialogue to talk about what the implications of those quote, other things would be. So the, what I want to ask the board right now tonight in just moving this dialogue forward, because it's 10 and we got a lot of agenda to get through, is do we think we want to stick with just the bags or question mark potentially broaden? I would like to potentially broaden and I'd like staff to do a little investigation on that and come back to us with thoughts on what we would broaden to and how it would be managed. Do other board members feel the same about putting that question out? Or is that something you know you don't even want to approach?
All right. For my part, I'm interested in just doing with the plastic bags at this point.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Lisa or Patty, just bags or possibly broadening?
I'm okay with possibly, oh, sorry.
I was just going to say, I'd like to just stay focused on the bags right now. That's where we started the conversation. So I'd just like to stay focused on that.
All right. And Patty, you are in the hot seat. It's two, two, and it's Patty in the last inning. You're up.
You know, I guess I'm not opposed to it being broadened because in some ways and, and it's just an exploratory thing. So I'm okay with that as long as you're going to the effort. I, I already see in some cases where they are using like a compostable clamshell container for food. So I think some people are doing it on their own anyway, but.
This is a good point. Okay, so we've got a three, two in favor of bringing back more information with no commitment. And that doesn't even mean writing it into the ordinance. So I don't know if we need an actual motion to direct or if we feel good about the three, two consensus, Dave, to get some more information on what else is typically included in a single-use plastics ordinance and, and how it's, it's how it is kind of implemented or managed. Is that, okay, and timeline, I think I have only one. I think I only have one other question or thought on what we need to build consensus around to give any direction whatsoever to take this to the next level, I think, which is oh, how the fee would be, who the fee would go to and how it would be used and timeline. So let's hit, it sounds like we had consensus that the fee should go to the business. Okay. And it sounds like we had consensus and it's not really our choice. That fee has to be used to address the impact, like the impact fee has to be used to address the issue. I think in our ordinance, we would want to include some of those things. And what we've talked about is providing bags, reusable bags and getting a reduction. What is that subsidy, using it to subsidize the, the recycled content bags? Those are two. So do we have consensus on what I've just said to the businesses and those two methods that they could use that fee for that I think we might have to include? Okay, and we can add other things too in the future. This is just preliminary. Pam?
I don't think we need to or should subsidize the paper bags for the stores. I mean, most of them have them now anyway. And they have that certain cost built in. I think what we need to make sure of is that they're 40% post-consumer, which most of them are already. So it might be better to be sure that that money is spent for lower income people or environmental education around the issue of single-use plastics. That, the paper bags, I don't think are going to be a big burden to the stores.
Okay, this is bringing to mind the idea of doing a survey to find out some of the, the facts on that. That might be a good idea to do. So just in the interest of moving this forward, we don't have to decide tonight, but I think that we have the basis kind of worked out, the fee. We can talk about the amount of the fee at some later time. I don't think we're ready to talk about that at all yet. And then the timeline. Are we happy with what's in the current ordinance? Does that differ from the Philly implementation? And how can we improve it? Can we kind of just put that as a question to staff also to do some research to look at our timeline? Contextualize it in the pandemic, whatever that means. And look at how other ordinances had have handled that timeline and incorporated education of the businesses. Can we agree that, that we could ask staff to do that? And I think that's probably about it for shaping, shaping the next iteration of ordinance. Does anybody have anything that I missed as main topics in that? Dave, yes?
I, I would, I would just urge the board to consider re-engaging the business community, getting their pulse on this. We did do some outreach and we did do some preliminary survey work. In fact, we worked closely with the Sustainability Institute and a law school group on this issue to do some outreach to businesses. That was a completely different world that we lived in when we did that. Things have evolved greatly. CDC is still urging caution with reusable bags. There's, you know, not, not been a whole lot of development on that. But I think there's, I think it would be, you know, a little bit premature to move on drafting an ordinance and presenting it back to the board for consideration without having had an additional opportunity to reach out to those businesses. You can, you can presume or assume that, you know, things will be handled a certain way or reacted to in a certain way. But until you had an opportunity to, you know, have those discussions and those, and those opportunities to, to reach out and get their feedback, I don't think you're going to know for certain, especially in the new environment that we live in. So for whatever that's worth, perhaps you want to move forward with a draft. And I can put that together. I took some notes. But I would suggest that the board consider doing some outreach to the businesses and find out how this is going to affect them in a post-COVID environment.
Thanks, Dave. That is jogging my memory about that outreach. Was that, that, was that done in any kind of a way that, that the results were compiled? Or was that so informal that it was just anecdotal? I can't remember.
We had a report. We, we did have a written and a presentation provided by the law school cohort that conducted the assessment.
I thought so. So yes, it is a different environment, but my memory is foggy. It would be helpful if you could send any information that's easily, you know, excerpted from your archive. If you could send that out to the current board, that information from the business community and, and community before, if you could send that to us, then then that'll help inform our next step. I feel like I'm ready to, I, I don't know, I don't think that the, maybe I'm wrong. Let's ask you another question. I don't, my understanding, and is it correct, is that this board would like to move forward with some ordinance changes to what we have currently. But we're not in a hurry to push it. And so that it would be reasonable to ask staff to include the fruits of our dialogue tonight in a revision, to send us the information from the last business survey that had been presented in the past in preparation for bringing the ordinance, the next iteration back to us for further discussion as we get the ball rolling and maybe some community input by that time, because the word has gotten out that we're thinking of this. And then we can talk about, you know, if we want to direct staff to take that next step of getting input. I would be open to that tonight. It's just a little bit after 10 and I feel like I want to kind of get moved on from this, yes, Lisa, item soon.
I'm interested in what Dave brought up about re-engaging. I'm interested in what Dave brought up about reengaging um whoever had been contacted before, the public or businesses and and soliciting some feedback and doing that again, knowing, you know, that was whatever, two or three years ago, um, before they take the time to incorporate the changes we talked about tonight into the ordinance. I just don't want to see a waste of time. You know, I'm, I'm you know, for me, I'm kind of apprehensive about rushing into this, um, even though in the big picture, I'm supportive. I'm just concerned that we do this carefully and that it makes sense and it's uh, not going to uh, you know, put a burden on those who are already struggling, you know, I, when I'm thinking about this, I'm thinking a lot about Giant and the White store on Martin Street and all those people who, you know, carry a lot of bags back to the apartments. And I've been in a place where you had to either buy a bag if you didn't bring it your own. And if you forget your bag or you buy a couple too many things, trying to, you know, carry paper bags back home is is difficult. So I'm not in a rush to do this. Um, and I would just like to have some more information, but like I said, overall, I'm not, I am supportive of moving forward. I would just like to gather all the information and make it the best, um, fairest, uh, most practical ordinance we can have. So that's, that's my position right now on it.
Dave, since you were, um, must have been researching this a little bit before the meeting and have this information on hand, can you let us know uh, how many folks you had reached out to there? Maybe, I don't know, do you have it in front of you, the survey information? Lisa had been inquiring about the effort and repeating it. I just wanted to get an idea of the scope of uh, staff time involved in that. On my thinking is a little bit different. I'm thinking what we talked about tonight would be pretty easy to incorporate into the current ordinance and would give us a kind of more uh, something to talk about with the business community because at this point, the ordinance that we have isn't really reflective of our thoughts. So let's try to work out the chicken or egg. Dave, how um, how much, how much staff uh, time? How many outreaches did you do? What's the number of folks that are there? How long do you think it would take for staff to do a repeat kind of uh, effort there that you have suggested?
I I'm not really prepared to to talk. I didn't review the results of the survey or the assessment that was done. This wasn't uh, uh, an agenda item initially, so I didn't do a lot of background research. Um, I'd have to look back and see exactly how many were engaged. It wasn't something that township staff took the initiative of. I worked on, I worked with, uh, I believe it was Laura Fowler with the um, Sustainability Institute or connected to Laura Fowler Fowler with Penn State Law. And then she probably had a group of maybe twenty or so, and I know they did um, just a lot of visitations to local businesses. Um, it was kind of an informal case study uh, as opposed to any kind of statistical analysis that was provided. They also did.
That helps. So really, that was kind of like, it sounds like a class project and it sounds like if we predicate any movement forward on doing a study like that will really be stalled out. So I guess what I want to think, uh, maybe put on the table here for us to consider as a board tonight, um, is that we incorporate what we already said because it gives us a better shaped ordinance. We're not in a rush. So staff can incorporate that in the next month or two and we can come back and have a dialogue about it. In that period of time, maybe staff could reach out to Laura Fowler and just see if she is willing to do a repeat um, engagement for us. Um, and if so, get that teed up and find out what the timeline would be for that. So then we've got a working copy that we all contributed to and we've got some information about um, doing a repeat uh, of that exact kind of um, test. And if that is not going to be an option, we can uh, think about what kind of uh, engagement we then would uh, move forward with um, with our new ordinance, uh, draft. Thoughts? Those two steps. I've got a yes from Patty. I've got an okay from Steve. Got a thumbs up and a, okay, all right, I'll take it. All right, um, let's move on to new business. Um. We've got the consent agenda up first and what's left on that is the request for donation from first night for first night for $1,000. Um, the treasures report just for acceptance and the contract 2021 dash C for wetland delineation final um, for $26.48. Um, so I would love to entertain a motion to approve the item A and item D and accept item B of the consent consent agenda.
I'll make that motion as you stated it.
Thank you, Steve. Do I have a second? Thank you, Patty. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh, next up, a public hearing on a resolution of Ferguson Township Center County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the chair and secretary to execute a grant of easement to the University Area Joint Authority for the construction of sanitary sewer force main on township property at thirty one forty seven Research Drive. This will be introduced by Dave Modricker, Director of Public Works. Dave, you are up. Thank you.
Good evening. This should be one of your shorter agenda items. Um, University or Joint Authorities upgrading the Scott Road Pump Station and Associated Force Main. That force main does travel up Research Drive. It will be located next to an existing force main. However, there is some additional easement area that the authority has requested. It crosses Whitehall Road at a slightly different location requiring um this additional easement in the southwest corner of our property. Authorities committed to restoring the property to existing conditions, including the bio swell, um, not damaging the township tree or the township building signage. I can share a screen and show you just where that's located. The the location uh, is on an exhibit in your board packet. The agreement itself was reviewed by the solicitor, probably just looking at yourselves right now. Let's get this moved out of the way here. And did I share my screen successfully?
Yeah, we shared it.
Whitehall Road, this is heading west. This is Research Drive. Added north. This is our property. This is the corner. Here's the township sign, one of our existing trees. So the force main comes across Whitehall Road. Is on an angle. And another slight jog and then it runs up parallel to the sidewalk. So the uh, motion is that the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution authorizing the chair and the secretary to execute a grant of easement to the University Joint Authority for the sanitary sewer construction.
Dave Modricker.
By uh, Dave Modricker.
You got it, Patty. Do I have a second?
This is Lisa. I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on the matter? Oh, I'm sorry. Um, this is a public hearing. Let's back up a second. Um, would anyone in the public care to comment? I think I'm seeing none. Uh, okay, seeing none. Let's do a repeat of that. Um, Patty, to you for the motion.
Oh, the the motion as read by Dave Modricker.
Great. And who seconded? Was that Lisa?
This is Lisa. I'll second.
Okay, fantastic. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, let's have a roll call vote.
This is presented as Resolution twenty twenty one dash thirty two. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Steckler?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Dennehy?
Yes. Thank you, Dave Modricker, and thank you. Welcome. Thank you much. All right, next up, a public hearing on a resolution of Ferguson Township Center County, Pennsylvania, opposing the forensic audit of the 2020 Pennsylvania election. Mr. Miller, you are up to introduce this one.
Okay, well, this is uh, uh, similar, uh, there should be in the packet, there's a uh, resolution similar to the one passed by the borough a couple of weeks ago. Uh, basically, I'm bringing this up as a opportunity for us to uh, take a stand in opposition to this. I think, in my opinion, it's a uh, repeat of the farce that we saw in Arizona. And uh, the state senate is forming a committee to uh, audit the 2020 election, despite the fact there's really nothing to indicate there was any problem with the 2020 election. Uh, among other things, there's subpoena issuing subpoenas to get the the driver's license and social security numbers of voters. And you'll find that any financial advisor will tell you to keep those sort of identifying information, uh, protect them as much as possible. And I guess my opinion is if there's any group that you want to be protected from more than a group of politicians in Harrisburg, I'm not sure who it is. So that's just an editorial comment, not part of the motion. So that that's my reason for introducing this is I think that it's an unnecessary action that uh, is counterproductive in terms of uh, fair elections and the way that we should take a stand in opposition to it.
Thank you, Steve, for that introduction. And this is also a public hearing. So would anyone care to comment? Okay, seeing none, let's close the public hearing and um, I'd like to entertain a motion.
No, I'll make a motion that the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution opposing the proposed audit, the 2020 election in Pennsylvania.
This is Patty. I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Pam Steckler?
I'm very much in favor of this. Thank you, Steve.
Um, thank you.
I'm just wondering how many other municipalities have done this? I know the borough did. Do you have any idea? I mean.
Oh, I know it's the borough.
Have an impact? You don't know? Okay, just curious.
Can only do what we can do and hope. Um, I just had a question about the resolution. I I I wasn't sure whether the the line about the committee was exactly correct or not. Was the was the committee formed for this or was there was a committee that was then charged with this? Um, I actually don't know the nitty gritty details. Um, but I have enough of a question that I wonder if we can, if nobody else knows either, if we can maybe remove that and keep the um, the meaning intact.
I know we could even just say has uh, announced
Yeah.
A committee will perform a forensic audit and that doesn't have to specify formation of election audit committee. Yeah.
Thank you. I I I would like that. Dave, do you need a motion for that? Okay.
But yeah, I think I think a motion to amend the resolution would be appropriate.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to amend the resolution to read that uh, Jake Corcoran announced that uh, a committee has been tasked with performing a forensic audit.
I second that. Okay, um. I just lost my place in the process. So we just amended um, the resolution. Do we have to vote on the amendment?
Vote on the amendment first.
Okay, okay, great. Let's go ahead and get that taken care of. Let's vote on that amendment. Um, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Okay, that amendment passes unanimously. Any further discussion on the resolution, the the primary motion itself? Okay, it looks like there is none. So Dave, if you would, take a roll call vote.
This is presented as Resolution twenty twenty one dash thirty three. Ms. Steckler? I saw a hand. Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Dennehy?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Uh, next up, a public hearing on a resolution of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, ratifying a collective bargaining agreement with the Ferguson Township Police Association for a term beginning January first, twenty twenty two and ending December thirty first, twenty twenty three. This will be introduced by Township Manager Dave Prowoka.
Thank you. And just very briefly, and the board's been involved in these discussions typically through executive session uh, as we proceeded through Act one eleven, uh, collective bargaining negotiations with the Ferguson Township Police Association. But uh, for those that are unfamiliar, uh, the township has a unionized police force. Part of that um, obligation for the township and the police association is to uh, engage in good faith negotiations to develop a collective bargaining agreement that has a finite term. In this case, it's a two-year term, so it'll be in effect if approved by the board and the association uh, for January one, twenty twenty two through December thirty first, twenty twenty three. And um, the tentative, the the parameters of the tentative agreement are included as an attachment to the resolution. Uh, if the board votes in favor of ratification, the same uh, will go to the police association and assuming they will vote in favor, which I expect they would, uh, we will begin to incorporate those tentative uh, elements into the final collective bargaining agreement, which would then be signed uh, by the chair and the secretary. If there's any questions on the tentative agreement, I can answer them or if there's any questions about the process, but I'm happy to say that this is the fourth consecutive collective bargaining agreement that we would have, if approved, been able to negotiate in good faith without the need to go to arbitration.
Thank you very much, Dave. Um, this is a public hearing, so I'd like to open up the floor to any comments. Seeing no comments, I will close the public hearing. There is a motion available on the agenda. I'd love to entertain.
I'll move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution ratifying a collective bargaining agreement, Ferguson Township Police Association.
This is Patty. I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Thank you all. Go ahead. Steve, go ahead.
I was just going to say that uh, to all appearances from what we've heard from Dave in the uh, executive sessions and uh, everything, this was pretty productive bargaining session this year. Uh, very little sturm and drang and it seemed to have gone well. And I I just wanted to compliment both the staff and the association uh, members that were involved in the bargaining. Because managing to do this without going into arbitration is definitely a a plus for everybody, so.
Well said, Steve. You took the words out of my mouth.
Sorry about that.
No, that's great. That's great. Pam?
I agree with Steve. Um, I just had a question. Dave, did you talk at all about a mask mandate with them?
Uh, I have a mask mandate in place already.
Okay, and and it's it's working?
Uh, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't understand the, what do you mean?
Everybody's wearing it. Everybody's wearing a mask.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, um.
What about, what about vaccination?
Uh, vaccinations, we probably have about just over fifty percent of all staff vaccinated. Um, and so we roughly are mirroring the county numbers, which I agree are pretty abysmal.
Yeah, I think it's a pretty good number, Dave. Fifty, sixty percent, somewhere in that range.
Fifty would be better.
Hundred would be better.
Nine point nine would be better. Ninety-nine.
But ju- just to be clear, a a mask mandate is not um, in the, in a collective bargaining agreement. That's a manager, that's a manager right. So we 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 implement those without, I mean, the vaccine mandate, if considered, that is a bargainable issue. But masking is not, that's tantamount to wearing.
Thanks, Dave. All right, any other discussion? All right, uh, Dave, we're ready for our roll call vote.
This is presented as Resolution twenty twenty one dash thirty four. Uh, Ms. Stevens? Ms. Stevens.
Yes.
Ms. Strickland.
Yes.
Ms. Dinnany?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Steckler?
Yes.
And I do want to thank the board for all of your assistance in this and your involvement. I think you can be very proud of the outcome. You're right, it was a it was a productive session, and it's so, the agreement is really a win-win for both parties, so appreciate your
Good to hear. That's great. All right, let's move on to item five under new business, which is request for modification and waivers. This will be presented by Director of Planning and Zoning, Jenna Wargo. Jenna, welcome.
Thank you very much. So the board is about to see three modifications and one waiver, all for the same subdivision plan for Pam's. Since she is new, I want to just review briefly what a modification and waiver is. So it's very similar to zoning hearing board when they grant a variance. However, modifications and waivers are granted
Can you speak a little bit louder, please?
Pam, is that better?
Jenna, are you, I'm not sure what's happening.
Can you get closer to the mic?
Is that better?
Yes, that's great. Now we can't hear you, though. Now we can't hear you at all. Something's happening. You don't appear to be muted, but indeed you are muted.
Hold on now.
Yes, we hear you now.
All right, trying to be fancy with these iPhones. All right, so similar to a variance that the zoning hearing board grants for anything in the zoning ordinance, modifications and waivers are granted by the Board of Supervisors, and that is for any requirement within the SALDO, so subdivision land development ordinance, Chapter 22 of Township's Code. The board may grant a modification or waiver for one or more provisions if the literal enforcement will exact undue hardship because of conditions pertaining to the land in question. So only provided that the modification will not be contrary to the public interest and that the purpose and intent of the ordinance is observed. So the first modification that the board will be hearing tonight was submitted by Pantera Engineering on behalf of their client. They've requested a modification from 22306 Minor Subdivision. This section includes requirements for submission and outlines a process for a minor subdivision plan. However, the definition of a minor subdivision was omitted from the most recent update to the subdivision land development ordinance that we did in November of 2019. Staff has reviewed the application and agrees that the proposed Rogan-Sycamore subdivision is a minor subdivision, and we are not recommending any conditions to be included with that request. Planning Commission reviewed this application at the September 27th meeting and recommended approval of this modification. Let's see if I can share my screen. Can show you. So what we have here. So the lot right now is this large lot here on Sycamore. The applicant is proposing to take this one lot subdivided into two by this line right here. And so looking at what they have to do, staff believes that this is minor in nature. And that's why we are recommending that that modification be granted to this request.
Thank you, Jenna, and also just confirming that the omission of the criteria in our zoning code or in the SALDO, we're working on that now through the zoning pain point revisions, yeah.
Yes, and it was included in the amendment that was received by the board.
Great, that's what I was confirming. Thank you so much. Okay. Sorry, getting back to my agenda here. So the first up, like we said, is the Rogan-Sycamore Drive subdivision, minor subdivision, which Jenna just presented. And we have a motion in the agenda. Let's start with that.
The Board of Supervisors grant the modification from Section 22-306 Minor Subdivision.
Second, Pam.
Steve and Pam, okay, discussion on the item. So I have, I have a point that is not about the plan details, but I think is, I can't tell, is that Pantera's conference room? Is there somebody actually, okay, there is somebody in there. Sorry, you were off camera. Okay, great. So I'm not sure what I'm going to be signing eventually if we pass this. But I wanted to ask about the documents. If there's, if there's a plan involved. We've been working on getting the documents gender neutral. And I've been noticing on the Pantera documents, for a long time I was signing at the chairman. It's a chairman. And then, and then I was giving some feedback. Can we just make that gender neutral and just be chair? And now, and now I'm seeing, and now I'm seeing, and now I'm seeing that there's white out on the man part. And I'm wondering, so we have a board of four females, four folks that identify as female. And there is a chance that after the next election, we'll all identify as female on the board. And so I just wonder if maybe in the actual file, we can remove the man part instead of whiting it out? Because it probably is going to be like a very long time till there's another man serving as chair. And I'm just wondering, since we want to be gender neutral and chair works for either male or female, can we just get to that point where we drop that man altogether? So that would just be my request to you to really in the file, drop it and not just whiten it out, kind of like waiting for the next man that's going to be able to sign at the man location. So I appreciate
They brought that to our attention, and that's moving forward, that's our direction.
Thank you so much. That is wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Okay, so I have no comments on the topic of this particular plan. Do we have any other, any other comments? All right, I believe this would be just a voice vote. So all in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next up, we have Jenna again, I believe, with the Rogan-Sycamore Drive subdivision 22-512.1.E sidewalks.
Thank you very much. Pantera Engineering, on behalf of their client, has requested a waiver from 225121E sidewalks. This section of the ordinance requires that sidewalks be installed along both sides of all private streets and/or driveways serving more than three units. Unless a modification is granted by the Board of Supervisors, only two lots are being created with the proposed subdivision plan, each with approximately 50 feet of frontage. No sidewalks currently exist along Sycamore Drive. On the roadside burns along Sycamore Drive are rip raft line channels. If sidewalks would be developed along Sycamore, it would require sidewalks to be placed on the lots and outside of the right of way. Staff has reviewed the application and is not recommending any conditions to be included with the request. Planning Commission reviewed this application at the September 27th meeting and recommended approval of the waiver.
Thank you, Jenna. Let's begin with the motion.
I have a question about that.
Oh, of course.
The waiver that's listed in the motion is different from what she has in her narrative.
Ooh, good eye. Yep, that's, I will be 22512. That's the title.
Good eye, Patty. Would you like to make that motion too, Patty?
Well, sure. That the Board of Supervisors grant the waiver from, which is it now? Sorry, I have to go
22512.
512.
One E.
One E sidewalks.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Steve. Any discussion on the matter? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And next up, we have the Rogan-Sycamore Drive subdivision 22-506.1.B and G Water Supply. Jenna?
Thank you. Pantera, on behalf of their clients, requested modification from 22506.1B and G Water Supply. These sections require a fire hydrant to be provided along public roads for the protection of buildings and developments of one and two family dwellings. Fire hydrants must be within 1,000 feet of the proposed development as measured along the center line of the fire apparatus access road. Since the proposed house on Lot 1R, that would be the lot on the right side of what I originally showed, it's set back on the lot that house is not within. The house is not within the required distance from the fire hydrant. So the applicant proposes to install a National Fire Protection Association NFPA 13D sprinkler system in the proposed homes built on the lots in lieu of relocating the fire hydrant as required by the township's ordinance. Relocating the fire hydrant requires an extension of nearly 700 linear feet and upgrading the current water infrastructure from four inches to six inches of pipe. Installing the NFPA 13D sprinkler system is financially feasible and provides a better outcome for fire protection in the proposed homes. Center Region Fire Director Steve Bear has reviewed this request and supports the modification, provided the homes are sprinkled. Staff has reviewed the application and isn't recommending additional conditions to be included with the request. Planning Commission reviewed this application at the September 27th meeting and recommended approval of the modification as well.
Thank you, Jenna. We have a motion in the agenda available.
I'll move that the Board of Supervisors grant modification from Section 22506.1B and G with the condition that proposed homes building these lots install a National Fire Protection Association 13D sprinkler system.
This is Patty, I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Oh, I've just lost my place in the agenda. Hang on. Okay, next up is the Rogan-Sycamore Drive subdivision 22-301 General. Jenna?
Thank you. So I'm going to, the board will see tonight is subdivision plan for these two lots. This request, this modification request is related to the slopes that are located on the lot. They are required to submit a land development plan. So this modification is related to the two-step process of the land development plan for a residential home. This is included in the updated zoning drafts as well. Residential homes, they aren't really as complicated as massive land development plans that we see with sheets and whatnot. So the applicant is proposing to construct that home on a lot with steep slopes. So that's 25% or greater by our ordinance. They're required to submit that land development plan for the proposed homes. So they, Pantera, on behalf of their client, has submitted the waiver for 22306 General. So that requires the two-step preliminary final review of that land development plan. Since it is a residential structure, the applicant is requested to go through the land development review process in one step. So that's the preliminary slash final process. Would still have to meet all the requirements of any other land development plan. It would just be a shorter process for them, given the context of what is being proposed. Public utilities will be available to connect to the home. Minimal earth disturbances will occur on the site. Staff has reviewed this application. We're not recommending any conditions to be included with the request. Planning Commission reviewed this at the September 27th meeting and recommended approval of the modification.
Thank you, Jenna, and I have two questions. One, in this motion, it says 22-301, and in the narrative, it's dash 306. Is it
There's so many modifications. Let me double check. 22-301.
There are so many modifications.
301, final answer.
It is 301?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And then just to make sure I have the proper understanding. We are not seeing this particular, we're not seeing the land development plan tonight at all. But this particular agenda item will allow the developer to just, or the client to just present it one time, the preliminary final, as opposed to two times preliminary passing and then final, correct? Okay. We have a motion in the agenda, so we would entertain that motion at this point.
This is Patty. I moved that the Board of Supervisors grant the modification from 22-301 General.
Steve, I'll second.
Thank you. So Patty has made the motion and Steve has seconded. I do have one additional question. I did already ask this to Dave Prabokha, but I'll just say it out in public. So this is similar to the slopes are similar to what we see in Thistlewood. And so when we, when we see this land development plan, there's going to be a condition within that where we are not, we are, there's a hold harmless type clause that's going to be happening where we, the township, are going to be held harmless from any potential problems that they might have from building on sloped land. Correct? Okay, awesome. Great, 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 great. Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And last but not least, the preliminary subdivision plan of Rogan and Sycamore Drive, also presented by Jenna Wargo.
So based on the modification that was granted in the beginning of this, this is now the preliminary slash final subdivision plan for the Rogan-Sycamore Drive subdivision. So on March 12th, 2021, Pantera Engineering submitted on behalf of their client, the Rogan-Sycamore Drive subdivision plan. The subdivision is a 10.152 acre lot located on Sycamore Drive. The applicant is proposing to subdivide tax parcel of 24009A254 into two lots. Lot 1A, about 2.5 acres, and Lot 1R, 7.5 acres. The parcel is located within a single-family residential zoning district and is currently an undeveloped lot. The applicant would like to build a single-family home on each lot. Planning Commission reviewed that preliminary subdivision plan the September 27th regular meeting and recommended approval to the Board of Supervisors, subject to the outstanding staff comments. Provided with the agenda is Rogan-Sycamore subdivision plan, as well as memorandum from myself. Provided with the agenda is Rogan-Sycamore subdivision plan, as well as memorandum from myself that provides an overview of the outstanding staff review comments.
Thank you, Jenna. Again, there's a motion in your agenda that I could entertain.
I'll move that the Board of Supervisors approved the Brett Rogan-Sycamore preliminary subdivision plan, subject to the conditions described in the Planning and Zoning Director's memorandum dated September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Steve. Do we have a second?
Patty, I'll second.
Thank you, Patty. Right, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And look forward to seeing just that word chair in all of those spaces for us to sign. Thank you very much, Pantera and Jenna.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
And you as well. Okay, next up, we've got the partnership with Solar United Neighbors, Center County Solar and Electric Vehicle Charger Co-op. This will be introduced by Dave Prabokka.
Thank you. So provided with your agenda, there's a letter from the Ferguson Township Climate Action Committee. We heard from Randy Robinson, the kind of informal chair of that group earlier this evening. The letter requests that the township become partner to the Solar United Neighbors solar and Center County Solar and Electric Vehicle Charger Co-op. So by being a partner, there's no cost to the township, but we can help to advertise the availability of this co-op to our residents and business owners. Those who opt in will be able to take advantage of an economy of scale that can be achieved through a cooperative purchasing program in order to facilitate solar installations and the installations of electric vehicle charging stations at residential properties and businesses, et cetera. So they're still working on getting their membership in place. They, this co-op had about forty members, last time I checked, and their goal is to get to a hundred. And that'll give them some momentum to, to negotiate some lower pricing than you might be able to achieve individually. There are a number of other regional partners, including the COG. So presumably, the township has already kind of endorsed this program. But Bellefonte Borough College Township and Patton Township have also signed on individually as municipalities and become partners to this, this program, this co-op.
Thank you, Dave. It is confusing to me. We were a partner through COG and now we're a double partner, but I guess that it doesn't cost anything, so I'm not that worried about it. So we have a motion in our agenda. We'll entertain it.
This is Lisa. I'll move that the Board of Supervisors partner with the Solar United Neighbors, Center County Solar and Electric Vehicle Charger Co-op.
Am I second?
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, let's vote. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? And motion passes unanimously. Next up is the Contract twenty twenty-one dash C five Storm Sewer Video Assessment Reject Bids, introduced by Dave Modrick.
Hello again. We don't normally reject bids, but I'll explain the reasoning here. On September fourteenth, we opened bids publicly for Contract twenty twenty-one C five Storm Sewer Video Assessment. As normal, the bid was advertised in the centennial time, sent out to potential bidders. So this contract involves conducting a video assessment of the storm sewer pipes. And along with that is pipe cleaning. Sometimes it's light cleaning, sometimes it's a little bit heavier. That's reflected in the unit prices. This year, in conjunction with our bolstered stormwater management plan, we had increased the quantity of pipe video assessment, as, as you might recall, to try to get a good jumpstart on a condition assessment for our storm pipes. We expected to see, you know, actually, perhaps reduced unit pricing, or at least the same unit pricing because of the increased quantities. In fact, when we opened bids, we ended up seeing prices almost double what we expected. And the bids were significantly over budget by about twice. All of the bids were, were over. So when this happens, we review the bids. We often give contractors a call to review pricing. And in this case, it appears that the, the issue at hand was some language we put in the contract that had to do with disposal of the water after we cleaned the pipes. And that was primarily due to an opinion that we received from DEP. The contract language reflected the requirement to dispose of the water in a manner such that contractors had to truck store and dispose of the water at a permitted site. And UAJA could not accept the water, so they had to find some alternative disposal methods. Upon further review of the matter, even since I wrote this narrative to the board, we do have another meeting with DEP set up, and there's some indications that we're going to receive a more favorable response on how to handle the, 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 the water from the, from the cleaning truck. And we'll develop a our own little pollutant reduction plan narrative that we believe is going to be acceptable to DEP. In, in any event, whether we're able to do that, or if we have to follow what we currently have written in the contract, we can't accept these bids because they're, you know, twice our budgets. We either need to reduce the scope or we need to try to keep a similar quantity of pipe, but find a more manageable disposal solution. So there is a memorandum in the packet, you know, saying as such. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have regarding this contract.
Thank you, Dave. Does anyone have any questions before we move to a motion? Steve?
I was wondering, is the main concern that you'd be dislodging a lot of sediment into the waterway, or?
Yeah, I think that was DEP's primary concerns. When the question was asked, the person we asked had to refer it up the chain, and I think we kind of got a standard stock response that prompted us to write certain language, and I, and I think we may be able to revisit that subject. So, so, so the trucks, when they clean the pipes, they suck up the sediment laden water, and then there is sediment filtration on the trucks. And then it typically discharge back into our storm system. But it was written, actually required that to be transported and then disposed and treated, so it slows down the whole operation. There was a trucking cost on top of it, and then the disposal on top of that. So we're, we're still investigating it. You know, I'd like to be able to come back to you with some more information, but, but regardless of the direction we go, you know, in this case, we're going to need to reject, reject these bids.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Dave. Any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain the motion in the agenda.
I'll move the Board of Supervisors reject all bids for Contract twenty twenty-one dash C five Storm Water, Storm Sewer Video Assessment. Direct staff rebid the project through a reduced scope of work.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thanks, thanks Pam. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Okay, motion passes unanimously. And we are moving on to staff and committee reports. First up, COG committee reports, and I'm up with the executive committee, typically a short report, because mostly we cover things in the general forum, but at some point, I'm going to have to give kind of a synopsis on all of the little side projects that we've been working on, like doing various policies for COG, like the communications policy, and I really want to make sure everybody kind of stays in the loop about all these little side projects we're doing. And then the only other item that relates to the communication policy and its very first implementation, the COG Parks Capital Committee had unanimously put forward a letter to Penn State gently asking for some commitment to public access in the connector trail between Whitehall Road Regional Park and Musser Gap. And the executive committee, Penn State, had told them that now they want to do a quick report in October on the MG two V project. And so, uh, general forum decided to not, or I'm sorry, executive committee decided to not send that letter yet to Penn State or onto general forum, depending on which part of the policy you're applying. And, and to wait for that presentation. So it's got me excitedly thinking that that means that Penn State during that presentation is going to let us know that they are guaranteeing public access. And that we don't need to, I don't know, that's what I'm kind of hoping. So if they say that, that'd be great, and then it's kind of just a rubber stamping of the letter. So unfortunately, that kind of like stalls out the letter, but that doesn't mean that Ferguson Township can't move forward on other aspects of that project. That was really the main other thing that executive committee did that I wanted to report on. If there's no questions, we can move on to Lisa with the CCMPO report.
Thank you. I'll just try to hit some highlights here. So you can see the agenda in the packet. We had a report on transportation alternatives set aside program. And what we were discussing was forming a committee to review the projects that are being proposed, and our, we have a project in there. So there's four proposed. Ones in Bellefonte Streetscape Project, Phillipsburg, and State College Borough each have one, and they were bike and or pedestrian path projects, and then Ferguson Township, our Streetscape Project, some portion of that was in there, so. Those will then be reviewed by the CCMPO committee and then forwarded to PennDOT and see, to see who gets funded. So we'll wait to see on that. We made a presentation on interstate management that involved I eighty and ninety-nine. And then, let's see. The main thing I wanted to bring up is we discussed the tip for twenty twenty-two, sorry, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six. And for anyone unfamiliar, that's just the list of upcoming road and bridges projects that are overseen by the CCMPO in coordination with PennDOT. So this is the first four years of projects that are on our long-range transportation plan, so. Some of the big ones are actually listed in the agenda. The construction on Atherton continuing is one of them. There's some drainage on Route one forty-four. Some transit priorities. So I did ask about moving our traffic signal up in Pine Grove Mills, where we're doing the signal warrant study. Moving that, separating it from the project that's in the long-range plan and moving it up, and the issue is that our these really have to be ready-to-go projects that are on the tip, and our traffic study won't be done by the time this tip is approved. So that's that. So that's kind of, these, these projects are carryovers from prior tips. So since, since this is not a separate project, that's why this isn't being forwarded to this one. But I did bring it up. I asked about it, but I'm bringing this up now because I can, I'm bringing this back to us to receive any comments you'd like to give to me. We won't meet again until November. I'm not, I don't have a date for when comments are due, but I think I can bring them back in the meeting in November. So what I could do, you know, if, if you need more information than is in the agenda to submit comments to me, I'm happy to find that. I don't think we need a whole agenda discussion item on this. You know, it's basically just kind of reapproving projects that are already on the tip, knowing that ours isn't quite there, but hopefully we'll get the other funding from the transportation alternatives. So that being said, we have a major project coming through at the other intersection of twenty-six and forty-five. So we do have one big thing coming through, and we received some spike funds, so just some funds that became available for that, which meant that other funds went to some other projects. So that was, that was good. We had a little, little discussion on the State College Area Connector. And comments are still being collected on that, I think. If you haven't had a chance to go look at any of the information, I can send links. It's worth your time to go look at it and see where the proposed routes are. It's it's going to be impactful if, you know, if something moves forward wherever it moves forward. So if you have any comments you want me to bring back to the committee on that too, I'm happy to do that.
My comments, my comments typically relate to this kind of a process where we save the worst part of the road until last, and then we have no choice but to build it. But my comments on this State College Area Connector are was a long time ago, the decision was made that was going to result in this kind of a devastating effect, and it's really very sad. But the comments on the, do we have comments on the TIF, Lisa, or?
We can, tip. Right, we can bring, we can, well, either one. I think PennDOT is still soliciting comments on the State College Area Connector. I think that went, is going on through. I don't have the date, sorry if I can find it.
Is there anything that you would suggest for the tip for the comments, for comments that as a board? Is there anything, you're closest to that, is there anything that you would suggest for us to consider?
I think it was fine from what I read. You know, this is just, you know, projects that were on before, they're getting moved up, and they're, you know, in, increasing their multimodal focus. So I think, you know, little by little, that's encouraging. So, and, and this will get reviewed again. So this is going to have to, this will come up again before too long, so. Yeah.
Any other questions for Lisa? Okay, um, oh Pam. Pam, you're muted right now. Did you have a question? I think I saw your hand.
Yes, yeah, I don't know why this is giving me trouble. It, is there a site that we can go to that we can see the, the different plans for that connector?
There is, and I can send out a link to the board and there may be one on the township website. I don't know if we have any direct links on the website to that.
You should probably be able to, I would think that you could probably search PennDOT State College Area Connector and probably be able to navigate pretty directly to it, yeah.
Yeah, but I can find a link in the morning and send it out. And they do have a number of slides that they've been presenting. You can see all the different routes that they've been suggesting.
Next, I'm wondering what everybody thinks is the least worst.
Depends on your perspective, probably.
It's really, it's really difficult. It's really difficult. The consultants that they had at the public meeting, they had somebody on in the ag aspect of it all, you know, what agricultural. Um, in the ag um aspect of it all, you know, what agricultural security areas are nearby, all of the. Perspective routes. They had somebody on archaeology and environment. I mean, they're, they, the consultants really did a good job of looking into it. And there's no great route. There just isn't.
There never, there never was though, so um, yeah.
The ones that expand three twenty-two are concerning. Or take, or go around three twenty-two, yeah.
And you know, when they make a road, more road, more cars come. The better the road, the more cars are gonna come.
It's true, it's. Yeah, unfortunately, the time to have this conversation was a long time ago because, you know. I kept calling three twenty-two a state route. Boy, was that, I cannot believe I thought that was a state route for so long. That is a. An uh, a US route right there, and then everything clicked for me. I kept thinking, why is this state route being included in the, in the National Commerce Network? Well, click, it's not, it's not a state route, Laura. You've been driving it for thirty-five years, but it's not a state route. Um, anyway, uh, yeah, it's, it's a big, big problem for us all here locally. Um, okay, so moving on to uh our next item, which is other committee reports. I don't think we have any. I'm sorry, the time is late. I do want to briefly take one moment, because I think we've been kind of learning together. Uh, uh, maybe making assumption about the COG CIP process. And I had been asking, when do we have input into the CIP process that we could change things? And I, a- and also the budget, we, those two processes, and how do we get input and and to the point where it can change? And I noticed something about the COG CIP process that I just wanted to bring up, so we can all just look at it and see it and reflect on it. So by the time the COG CIP got to the General Forum. It was going to be just a matter of record. And then at the Executive Committee, I said, maybe shouldn't we put it as a discussion in case we want to do something there? But I didn't realize that they were be so strict about, it's only a discussion, there's no action. If you remember, Elliot Abrams talked about that new policy with the new agenda, and can you make an action if it was just discussion and so on and so forth? But what, it just really illustrated to me. How when the COG CIP is made, there's never any opportunity for change that I could see identify yet. It's very unlike our process here at the Township. Where the staff prepares it, then it comes to us, and then we, we change a lot of things, rightly or wrongly, we do. We prioritize and de-prioritize and move things around, and I never saw an opportunity for that at COG. And so that's, it's just, it's an interesting difference uh between maybe that tool and how it's used. And that we may, as a township, want to think about whether we want to give input into, maybe there might be a better way. Um, that would involve more regional discussion and cooperation and more, you know. Negotiated priorities in terms of that. If it didn't, when it got to General Forum. If it wasn't a fight to even get it just to be a discussion, it might have some action attached to it. Um, it's just a thought, so thank you for indulging me in that time late here. Um, next up, we have staff reports. Uh, Dave is here for his manager's report, so I'll hand it over to Dave.
Um, staff reports are included with the agenda. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right, um, any questions for Dave or any other staff member? I might have one or two. Okay, no other questions. Um, sorry, I'm just trying to get, had a little miniature list up here. Um. Oh, uh, the process with the zoning um amendments. And the planning commission, I think, did they discuss it twice now? Um, and where are we in the process? Uh, it. Does it come back to us next? And then it's gonna go again to the Planning Commission and CRPC, or is it now gonna go to CRPC and then come to us? Or none of those choices? Could you let me know about that process where we are and where we're going? Thank you.
Yes, I believe it has made the Planning Commission agenda twice. It was the focus of of a recent meeting, a primary focus of a recent meeting. Uh, once the amendments are drafted, it would come back to the board for your review. Um, and so that could take, I mean, that that could take the form of a re-referral back to the Planning Commission, or the Planning Commission. Would submit the recommendations or would submit the the amendments with the recommendation to approve and. Wouldn't have to go back through that process. It would, because it's a zoning amendment, have to go in front of Center Regional Planning Commission. But we would wait for the board to have an opportunity to review and amend or modify the the proposed changes before we sent it over to them. That's typically kind of a um, when it's in a format, or when it's in a substantively, when it's in a way that the board is comfortable with. Wh- when we'll send it to the Planning Commission for any comments or questions or concerns they might have. Center Region Planning Commission.
Okay, sorry, I'm gonna just recap to see if I have it straight then, so it's been, it has been to the Planning Commission twice. And now staff is preparing the amendments, then it'll come back to the board. And then we review it and we decide if we want to send it again to our planning commission. But we definitely send it to CRPC.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, okay? Um, and then my other item wasn't a question, but there's been several things that are happening. And could use some promotions, and so maybe this is a time to mention um them. Uh, one being the CADA reimagine survey process that's happening. Um. Can we actively promote that to folks uh that are on our lists? The other thing is the Pine Grove Mills Mobility Study. Is it an open house, or I'm not sure what, I believe it's on the fourteenth.
Fourteen, that's correct, and it is an open house, yes, virtual open house.
A virtual open house, okay, I um, I didn't see it on our list of upcoming meetings. But can we promote it through social media? To try, okay, great, thank you. Um, and then d- different, but uh similar, because it's about outreach. Um. What would we need to start educating our residents about the spotted lan- spotted lantern fly? Based on the COG General Forum Report, so. Would you say, would it, would it be easy, say, for example, if cooperative extension? Did like a a campaign that you could just pick up on and forward? Is that something that would be good, or do we need to have an agenda item to talk about this, or? How can we kind of get that ball rolling? And maybe that's not a question for right now, because it's more involved, but.
Yeah, I I made a note. Um, we'll, we'll take a look at what resources, materials are available. Um, and if it's something that the extension can put together, a short publication or something that we can disseminate, we're happy to do that. Um, probably don't have the staff or expertise to do something meaningful ourselves.
Right.
Um, we don't have an arborist even right now to uh kind of have have um put in charge of that, but. Um, we'll see what's out there and we'll get uh, get some material that we can distribute.
Thanks, thanks so much. Thank you so much, and uh then the last item is still about like information, getting information out. And it might relate to the spotted lantern fly that went through General Forum. Um, I saw today that like Trish Meek at CRPC was promoting the Spring Creek. College Township Spring Creek Park Master Plan Revision. So I'm wondering if we can get CRPC involved with promoting some of our stuff. Whether it's spotted lantern fly, whether, well, CADA reimagine isn't ours, PGM Mobility Study. Can we kind of get there? They seem to have active communications. Can we also enlist them with some of our stuff, like apparently College Township has also? Um, is that? Is there a formal way that we do that, or I'm not sure how this occurred, that they were promoting the Spring Creek um Park Master Plan?
Yeah, we can, uh, we can uh provide them with, certainly with the mobility study, uh, I think that's very relevant. They often pick things up of ours and presumably other municipalities, just through them seeing it on on the publication. I know Trish Meek and the College Township Planner have a relationship, so perhaps they were communicating about that, and and so it might have been an informal thing. Um, but we can easily send them some material about the ability study in the upcoming open house and have them.
Thank you so much. Great, great, great. Okay, I have nothing else for staff reports. Uh, seeing no other, we could move on to communications to the board. Does anyone have anything that they want to share? Okay, I'm seeing none. Uh, next up, we have calendar items. We've got our regular meetings listed. And just to reinforce then, the Pine Grove Mills Mobility Study Virtual Open House is October fourteenth. And Dave, do you know what time, I'm sorry, off the top of your head, do you know what time that is?
It is, oh, let me just go to my calendar. I believe it starts at seven PM, but. Six PM, excuse me, six PM.
Great.
And it is a, uh, there'll be a public presentation. It's actually uh Microsoft Teams. Um, so not Zoom, but they have it set up so it's open to the public. Um, you just click the link and it should drop you right into the the meeting room.
Great, fantastic. Okay, so in addition to those regular calendar items, we've got. October fourteenth at six PM, our virtual PGM Mobility Study Open House. Uh, and we've got Coffee and Conversation Saturday, October ninth. Um, if nothing else, we're ready for that long-waited moment. Pam?
Really quick, I just wanted to mention um communication to the board from Randy Hudson. Thanks for the bios whale. He wrote a really nice letter, and I guess everybody saw it. Um, that he was pleased that that became part of our. Uh, infrastructure.
Thanks for mentioning that, Pam. That was nice to receive that email.
Yeah, it was really nice.
Thank you. All right, if nothing else.
I should adjourn.
Fantastic. Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Right.
Good afternoon, if you're David.